You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is July 6, 2022, meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can find information on this meeting by visiting www.xslaporte county.org.
Good morning, everyone. How nice to see you on this beautiful July morning. Packed house, great. Let's start the meeting today. This is the meeting of the LaPorte County Commission, July 6th. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Rosinski?
Present.
All three present.
At this time, we'd like to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Madam President, there are a few additions I would like to make. Under requests, I would like to add permission for Health Department Director Amanda Lanners to approach the council to use some non-reverting funds to replace some ceiling lighting HVAC on the fourth floor of the complex. I'd also like to add, under requests, permission to approach the council requesting additional funds for fuel and for a new full-time maintenance technician position by Jeremy Sabecki from the Parks Department. Under Old Business, I would like to add, consider termination of Community Corrections Director Rochelle Brown for failure to notify Commissioners and County Attorney of Death in Custody and other good and just cause consistent with Community Correction Board's April vote of no confidence. And then, under New Business, one item, consider repeal or significant amendments to Ordinance 95-6.
I would second your motion to add these to the agenda.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda as suggested. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you. The agenda is amended. Next, we have, consider approval of our June 15 minutes. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our June 15 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Consideration of claims, Mr. Auditor.
Commissioners, for your consideration, we have payroll for the period ending June 17, 2022, in the amount of $1,863,896.56. And for the period ending July 1, 2022, $1,276,899.48. The difference is that in the first period, there's a bonus being paid out. And then we have operating expense claims in the amount of $93,65,414.33. That number is obviously gargantuan, and that is because my office paid out the, just over $85 million in the property tax, the settlement, the monies for the property tax paid out to all the different units of local government.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims and payroll as presented. All those in favor? I'm sorry?
One other item is, I wanted to append that, I apologize. And add an amount of $6,825 for a February 15, 2022, non-litigation billings, the undisputed amounts from Friedman and Associates would be added to the, to that amount of the $93, 65,414.33.
Motion to approve all of that. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the claims and payroll as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public comments. So I'll, some of you are fresh and new faces. We're glad to see you. Just a few words, if you are here to talk about gypsy moth, we will be, we will have a part on the agenda where you can chat with us about that. So you can either do that at public comment, or you can wait to that part on the agenda. There's a couple other items that I imagine people are here, if you're here to talk about the bypass, we have a section on the agenda, you can talk about the bypass. So if you're here for other things, you have some other items on your mind, you're welcome to speak. We do try to reduce our time to three minutes, but if you go over, we did remove the time, the time clock, and just ask that you be respectful and civil and not, not disrespectful. So, welcome to our meeting, anyone from the public, either in present or on Zoom that would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Diane Warkey. I live out on 600 West, and I know you're going to talk about the gypsy moth, but I just want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I mean, I feel like this county council and you guys have acted quickly on this, and I want to thank you very, very much for it. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to work together to get, you know, education out to the public, so. And just to let you know, I am really struggling today. It was a hard day scraping all those moss yesterday and cleaning that up, so just thank you again for hearing us. I really appreciate it.
Well, that's what we're here for, but I have to say, the testimony that your group gave to the county council was really very moving, and all of us that own property or own homes could feel your pain, so we're here to help and see what we can do.
And you know, that's what I found when I spoke to people, is they were hurting, they were tired, they were, it was their property. I had a couple say, we're gonna, we want to sell our home, and I said, please, wait. They couldn't be here because they worked today, and I said, wait, we've got the county, they're gonna help us somehow organize this, get it worked out, we're gonna fix it. So it, I'm hoping that this will be a knowledge thing today for a lot of people, and an educational thing for our county. So, thank you again. I just wanted to say thanks. And thanks to Phil Marshall for helping so much. He was awesome.
Right. Thanks. Any other members of the council, or the public who would like to speak at this time?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
My name is Mike Seitz. I live at 212 Lakeside, Fish Lake, Indiana, and I am here to talk about the bypass or the economic development corridor. And I had the honor of being appointed the president of the LaPorte Chamber of Commerce in 2002, which, at that particular time, the chamber took it upon themselves to conduct a second study of the, what I'm gonna call now, the Economic Development Corridor. And the previous administration under the chamber also did a study on that. And it was more about looking into the future, looking into the future of LaPorte, looking at the future of the transportation issues of LaPorte. And it was, again, to try to eliminate the truck traffic in the downtown, which is very important, to make the downtown more pedestrian friendly and business friendly, and exactly, and that. But it was also to develop an economic development corridor, an opportunity for the future growth of economic development for LaPorte County. With proper planning, proper growth, we felt at that particular time that there was a potential for opportunity for new, new shopping centers, new industrial parks, if it was planned accordingly. I mean, you didn't want to have a, not a bypass, but an economic development corridor like Kokomo, where you have to have a bypass to bypass the, you know, because of the curb cuts. But if it was planned properly, the economic development corridor could be a vital asset to the future of development of LaPorte County. Studies have shown that if the, if the Kingsbury Industrial Park becomes full potential, that sooner or later, there is going to be a gridlock of traffic coming out of there and, and heading towards the toll road. And there's gotta be a way to, 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 you know, to move that traffic. Again, it's important to move, keep it out of, out of the downtown, but it's really also important, and, and that's why I'm here, because I don't want you to forget about that, about the possibility for future development, for economic development expansion along an economic development corridor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seitz. Are there any other members of the public, either in person or online, who would like to speak at this time?
I would like to speak, if you can hear me. My name is Matt Stock. I'm on Zoom.
Hi, Mac. Go ahead, please, we can hear you.
I just wanted to say that with respect to what the gentleman who was just up there and said, a lot of people are trying to find solutions for this bypass, and, and, you know, a lot of business owners up on the LaPorte County Corridor website have put in their two cents, and you know, they have nothing but, you know, profits to gain, because they don't have any, any skin in the game, so to speak, for loss. And as somebody whose house will be directly, have the highway go right over the top of it, and, you know, we'll lose my 20-year home at, there on Fail Road, I've got a little bit different viewpoint of that. There seems to be a lot of missed opportunities the LaPorte City could do to be helping themselves before looking to expand out over the top of the, the community, like, you know, shutting down specific cross streets in town to reduce some of the stoplight traffic and better flow the area. You know, this Boyd Boulevard was put in place specifically for this issue, and it was never utilized. The Fail Road Bridge there that goes to the north of Highway 2 could be reinforced or rebuilt at a cheap, much cheaper cost to allow truck traffic to be, leave the east side of town and go up to 20 where it can reach Fail. There, there are a lot of things that could be done, probably done cheaper than this. I've sat for hours and hours, for weeks on time downtown and watched at the heaviest, you know, traffic moments, right around 2:30, 3:00, 3:30, and, and, you know, there are semi-truck traffic, most of which is coming from the east and it's turning right on to 30, is it 35? And trying to, trying to get out of there, and, you know, widening of that area, the reduction of timing and the stoplights, the Kingsbury, you know, coulda, shoulda, woulda, it might happen, it might not. I've worked out there for the last nine years, and there's no significant growth happening out there. There's been some activity, but, you know, maybe in another 15, another 20 years, who knows? It's just not happening. So I just wish that everybody consider that, as, as much as the business owners in downtown are hoping to take advantage of this, that, you know, they aren't losing anything. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mac.
Thank you.
Mr. Veach?
Good evening. After, good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Mathias, glad to see you back. Hopefully a full recovery for you.
Thank you so much.
We could sure tell your presence was missing at the last meeting. You might want to consider leaving others in charge while you are gone. As we have witnessed in here many other times, things spiral out of control in your absence. Thank you to Mr. Friedman for stepping up and getting the meeting somewhat under control, somewhat had to. While I was talking with all of you, except you, you weren't here, it could be heard on the recording that someone said, "I know," when I made the statement about the paperwork being falsified. I, along with several others, believed the voice was you, Mr. Friedman, yet I still do not see or hear of any internal investigations. Mr. Haney, I want to thank you for what I believe is the first public recognition of our neighborhood's plight. Most in the neighborhood have never heard you even come to our defense for anything pertaining to us. Yes, it was political name-calling, and yes, it was way out of line. Many things have been in here. Mr. Rosinski, once again, you have done something that fellow Commissioners felt the need to apologize for. This time, you brought political name-calling front and center. Illegal activities are not political, they are illegal. This issue, this is an issue that your name has been brought up many times as a supporter for the one property owner, not the many who remonstrated against it. You have proven your disdain for the neighborhood's fight while you've sat on the board stopping all dialogue at Commissioners' meetings at the start. This was followed up with ordering signs removed around the area without proper procedure. Let's not forget the foul language routine from a while back where I pleaded with you to watch your verbiage because of the youth that were in attendance at the meeting. I believe you apologized for that time. Sitting in Florida is no excuse while attending it on a Zoom meeting. Let's not forget the time where you stopped me saying, "I was talking for 10 minutes," while timestamp shows it was under three minutes. How many times has this board been questioned by, questioned by others?
Mr. Veach?
Because the time clock was used only for me.
May, may I just interrupt you just for a moment? Could you talk to us about what's on your mind today?
I am.
Okay.
I am. This is what's on my mind. This stems from what he said to me last week.
I really don't, my colleague to attack us, and let's stick to the top.
I'm not attacking anybody.
Okay, let's stick to the topic and say what you have to say.
I am 100% on topic. Everything was done in here. Nothing I have said was not said without you saying it.
No, but we don't need to regurgitate our history. Let's talk about today.
Uh, let's see. Again, why was the clock only used against me? I appreciate the clock being gone now. Then we get to the name-calling at the last meeting. When does it stop? Why, why, why is there no discipline started? Robert's Rules, I'd asked if I understood about Robert's Rules. I said, I would understand. That is out of line. The way he does that is out of line. Why is it I'm only the fair game to be criticized? Now, I'd like to end this with a quote from Ms. Mathias from your Facebook page. It starts with speaking out. The things that are important to your family, use your voice, and please, please vote. See what happens when you don't? You, you beg of people to speak out. I speak out, now you beg me to stop. What was being said by him was wrong last week. What I have been up here approaching was wrong all along. It has stopped, but there's little inklings that it's gonna start again. Why is this illegal activity ignored in here? I'm speaking out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Veach.
Mr. Veach.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there anyone else on Zoom? Is that, do we have anyone? No? Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, let's move on. Public comment is closed. Let's open with department head comments and reports. Are there any department heads, either online or in the room, who have a report to give Hearing none, let's move on. Next on the agenda, we have requests. The first request is, consider permission for travel to Reno, Nevada for a conference. Erica Stallworth. Erica, I'm not sure if she's here, but...
Madam President, I believe this is in relation to some of the training travel funds that they have, so they don't have to go before the council, so I would...
I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the request for, for travel to Reno for juvenile services.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve travel for a conference to Reno, Nevada, for Erica Stallworth, juvenile services and staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Next, we have, consider permission for travel to Nashville, Tennessee, for a conference for the prosecutor's office. Is there anyone from the prosecutor's offices who's here? If not, I know that they have funds for this, so I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request from the prosecutor's office for travel for a conference. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Next, consider permission to close the voter registration office during Fair Week. It's, it's closed in the county buildings, but they will be doing voter registration at the fair. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the voter registration office during the week of the fair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have requesting permission to approach the council to use non-reverting funds to replace ceiling lighting and HVAC. Amanda Lanners, the director of the Health Department. Amanda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We would like to approach the council to use non-reverting funds. We have the money available to replace the, essentially, the entire ceiling in our, on our floor. It's the original, it's the original ceiling from when the building was built, and the building and I are circling each other to see which one's older, because nobody can come up with the exact date, but it's been there a while. Our floor was remodeled 13, 14 years ago. Multiple other offices were taken out, walls were knocked down, we were given the entire floor. There's five different tiles throughout the ceiling, most of which are no longer produced and can't be replaced. So we are scavenging from other areas that are not viewable to the public to be able to replace tiles, which, again, very quickly become stained, and they, they can't be replaced. Obviously, you know that material is porous, it's soft, it gets wet, and it never completely dries out, and it becomes another health issue with mold, and we don't want that going on. I thought it would be something nice and simple, just replace that ceiling, but then it, it just snowballed into having to address the HVAC, which was never addressed when our floor was remodeled. One side of the building will literally be 58 degrees in my old office. It was, I was in there for five years, 58 degrees regularly, and the other side of the building is 90 degrees, other side of our office, so it's, it's crazy. So, I requested quotes from Mr. Lewandowski. He got me those quotes. We have the funds available in a non-reverting fund, and we'd like to hopefully use those funds to replace those ceilings.
And for public information, what is, what is the estimate for the, the job?
Between $180,000 and $190,000. Right now, also, we know building costs are going up. We wouldn't be doing this work until later in the year, but to get it approved now, to at least skip the materials purchased, so it doesn't go up another 10%.
Great. Thanks for the...
Motion to approve the request to approach council.
Out of second, that's long overdue.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to allow Amanda Lanners, Director of the Health Department, to approach the council for funds from their non-reverting account to replace ceiling and do some other modifications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Next, we have request permission to approach the council requesting additional funds for fuel and for a new full-time maintenance technician position. Jeremy Sabecki, is Jeremy online?
He's, he's on a college visit with his daughter today. He said he...
Oh, I, yes, I do remember that now. So Jeremy was unable to be with us today, but he has discussed this with us. With the cost of fuel rising, he needs additional funds, and then we've been discussing, the parks have grown and grown and grown, and he's having trouble with part-time positions, so he would like to take some of those part-time positions and create a new full-time maintenance technician position. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is a request to approach the council for funding.
We have a motion and a second? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve this, allowing Mr. Sabecki to go to the council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, let's see. Consider permission to approach the council to establish an overtime budget. Is that still on the...
We didn't remove it earlier. I would move to table this until the next meeting.
Okay.
Second.
This is a request from the, from the Community Corrections Department to approach the council. This has been tabled. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to table it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Under Old Business, consider recommendation for LaPorte County Bridge Naming Committee. I believe Sue Webster and Bruce Johnson are here.
Madam President, if, if it pleases the board, could we move up the, the other item here that we added to New Business here before we get to that?
That was under Old Business, so you want to move that...
Just move that up to A if it pleases the board.
Any problem with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, before the bridge naming, I'm sorry for that, we are going to consider a resolution to immediately terminate Community Corrections Director Rochelle Brown for failure to notify the Commissioners and the County Attorney of Death in Custody and other good and just cause consistent with the Community Corrections Board's April vote of no confidence.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Friedman?
Yes, just some context. As you all know, last night after speaking with all of you, including Commissioner Haney, who is a liaison to Community Corrections, I determined that as of yesterday afternoon, 96 hours after a death in custody at Community Corrections, that none of you, nor my office, was alerted by Director Brown to that fact. In fact, Ms. Brown saw fit to contact the Indiana Department of Corrections on the day of the death, and still to this day has not notified the Commissioners or my office, who have had to learn secondhand of this unfortunate death in custody. You all know that when a death in custody happens at the jail, the sheriff immediately communicates with Commissioners, council, and my office because of the myriad issues connected with the death in custody and the need to have a proper and timely investigation. This incident is just the latest in a series of issues where the director has failed or refused to notify this commission or seek your consent and keep the Commissioners fully informed on matters that pose significant legal or financial risk to the county. I have informed Community Corrections Board President John Lake that I was making a recommendation to you all, and that there would likely be consideration of termination today. He interposed no objection. Such an action is consistent with the recommendation to terminate made by the board when they cast a vote of no confidence at their April 22, April 2022 board meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor, and did you second it?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to consider immediate termination of Community Corrections Director Rochelle Brown for failure to notify the Commission and the County Attorney of Death in Custody and other good cause, and good and just cause consistent with Community Correction Board's April vote of no confidence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried.
Madam President, in the meantime, I would like to appoint America Beatty as the acting director until such time as that would be moved on by the board.
We have a motion to...
Second.
...name America Beatty as the acting director effective immediately.
Yes.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, we have, consider recommendations from the LaPorte County Bridge Naming Committee. Sue Webster and Bruce Johnson are here to speak to us. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having us on your agenda today. Our Bridge Naming Committee works very hard on this. We do a lot of research, and this will be the third time that we're presenting six names to you. Our, our committee discusses the names we want to honor, and we get recommendations from other people as well. We are already working on our next list, and we will be presenting that to you in about six months. We hope that you will approve the ones that we are presenting to you this morning. Our first bridge for this bridge naming group will be for Potawatomi Indian Chief Sagana. Records for the Indian tribes in our area in the early 1800s can be found, they are limited, but they provide information on how our county and the townships were developed. Sagana Lake honored Chief Sagana of their, honored him by naming one of their roads surrounding the lake, East Sagana Trail. Since some of the information in the records that go back to the early 1800s have various spelling, Sagana, S-A-U-G-A-N-A, is the most common spelling for him that we have found. The, well, in, in the documents that we did find, when he signed his signature to anything, it was with an X mark. There are very interesting stories in print that can be found. One was that while gathering for a treaty council with the United States Government and the Potawatomi's in 1826, an estimated 400 to 500 Indians were gathering for the treaty council. In one group on their journey, some of the best hunters were sent out to find and kill deer for food, and they were unable to find any. They were desperate for food. Chief Sagana was known for his remarkable dreams and had seen a vision that the hunters would kill four deer in the morning by a height pointing to the heavens, which in the records show would have been about 9:00 AM. When the, when the hunters awoke the next morning, they went out and killed five deer and one bear, so they had plenty of food to sustain them for the next few days until they arrived at the council. Chief Sagana may have been one of the lower-ranked Potawatomi chiefs in Indiana. However, in the area where Galena Township is now, he was one of the main chiefs. These Indians were superstitious and believed in dreams, and the Indians in his tribe found a great deal of faith and strength from them. In 1827, the Winnebago Indians invited the Potawatomi's to join them in a war of extermination against the white settlers, and Chief Sagana was one of the most influential of the Potawatomi chiefs to reject the proposal. As the Winnebagos continued with their plans, Chief Sagana, along with 15 other chiefs and headmen, visited the area missions with this message. "Our brothers, we are very sorry to hear that some Indians are fighting with the white people. We will not join them. We will remain at peace. We are happy that you have come to live among us as you are our friend, the same as one of us. If anything occurs that we should know for our safety, we desire you to inform us and advise us what to do. If we hear anything of danger to you, we will inform you." Known treaties with the United States Government were signed in 1826, 1832, 1839, and 1849. In the treaty with the Potawatomi dated October 27, 1832, signed by agents of the government signed by agents of the government and approximately eighty Indian bands and chiefs documented by signatures or by the X mark as their signature, which is how Chief Sagana and also Chief Toponebe signed this treaty. Different amounts of land were given to the parties. Chief Sagana and Chief Toponebe, Toponebe were each granted one section. Money and goods were also awarded to the Indians included in the treaty. According to records, Chief Sagana sold his property in October of nineteen thirty-four for two hundred dollars to a family of white settlers. A story printed in the Lowell Tribune in nineteen ninety-two tells accounts from a journal kept by William Polk, who oversaw the troopers moving the Indians who were then living in the Twin Lakes encampment in Marshall County, Indiana, to their new home in Kansas. The journal was found in nineteen thirty-six among Judge Polk's belongings and a copy was printed in an Indianapolis newspaper that year. The journal states that on August thirtieth, eighteen thirty-eight, they commenced collecting the Indians at the Twin Lakes encampment, which included about one hundred and seventy Indians. Approximately seven hundred and fifty more Indians were gathered to march with them. They loaded thirteen wagons with baggage belonging to the Indians and prepared for the journey. The government had selected their new home would be beyond the Mississippi and Kansas. On September fourth, eighteen thirty-eight, they left the encampment with a total of two hundred and eighteen horses owned by the Indians and twenty-six wagons in the expedition. Chief Sagana and thirteen members of his family were left behind because they were too ill to travel. Judge Polk described the conditions as extremely sultry and dusty with much distress on account of the scarcity of water. Provisions and forage were scarce and not of the best quality. They stopped the first night after traveling twenty-one miles. Fifty-one persons were left behind at this stop because they were unable to continue. The journal detailed a few additional days with the similar problems that was happening all along the route. He made entries until September twenty-ninth, eighteen thirty-eight, and they were still in Illinois, so they had quite a ways to go after that. Chief Sagana and his family moved to live near Sagana Lake. He was highly regarded as an Indian chief who sought for a peaceful existence. He was of the Catholic faith and stories were that, that he blessed Lake Sagana and would keep it safe. It was believed that he was buried in Cedar Grove Cemetery at Notre Dame. The Cedar Grove Cemetery manager was contacted and said he had been asked that question many times. However, the cemetery records from eighteen forty-four to the mid nineteen twenties were lost in a fire. There are no markers or records. What is known is that an Indian burial, burial ground from Indiana had been moved to Cedar Grove, so he may have been there. We would like to honor Chief Sagana with the bridge named the Padawanami Indian Chief Sagana Memorial Bridge. It will be located at five hundred east crossing the toll road in Galena Township just outside of Sagana Lake. The next, the next bridge will be named in honor of Alan Whitlow. Alan Whitlow touched many lives during his career in education as the director of the Michigan City Boys and Girls Club and many, many years dedicated to community service. Mr. Whitlow is genuine in his concern for people, a mentor who provided direction to many, especially youth. He was born in nineteen thirty-nine and passed away in twenty seventeen. Al Whitlow was a nineteen fifty-seven Elston graduate who returned to his alma mater as a teacher and basketball coach. He was the assistant coach on the nineteen sixty-six Elston High School State Championship Basketball Team. He was honored to be included in the Michigan City Area Schools Wall of Fame in two thousand and six. He later became a junior high school principal, numerous administrative positions, and superintendent for the Michigan City Schools. Alan Whitlow served on the Michigan City Common Council in the early nineteen eighties. He was known on the council as a moral compass. He again served on the city council from twenty fifteen until his death in twenty seventeen. Mr. Whitlow moved to Indianapolis and was Director of Personnel and Labor Relations for Franklin Township Schools. After retiring from education, Mr. Whitlow returned to Michigan City and became the Executive Director of the Michigan City Boys and Girls Club from two thousand and one to two thousand and fourteen. While with the Boys and Girls Club, he provided a positive influence in the lives of the youth in Michigan City. In two thousand and six, Al Whitlow was named the Michigan City Human Rights Commission Humanitarian of the Year for his generous contributions, commitment of time, support, and inspiration to the city of Michigan City and its citizens. In two thousand and five, he was awarded the Laporte County Bar Association Liberty Bell Award, which is awarded annually to a Laporte County resident who is recognized for community service and a dedication to good government and civic responsibility. He and his wife Patricia raised their four children in Michigan City. He was a pillar in our community. The Bridge Naming Committee would like to name the bridge on Springland Ave over Trail Creek near Krieger Middle School after him. The next bridge we hope to have named after Sergeant Robert Earl Burgholtz. Robert Burgholtz was born May twenty-eighth, nineteen forty-eight, to Henry and Gertrude Burgholtz. He is buried alongside them at Heckman Memorial Cemetery in Galena Township. Robert graduated from Elston High School in Michigan City in nineteen sixty-six. According to the Elstonian yearbook, he was active in junior concessions, home monitors, highway, and cross-country. After graduation, he was drafted into the Army. He began his tour on February sixteenth, nineteen seventy. On July twelfth, nineteen seventy, he was killed in action in South Vietnam, Quang Tin Province at the age of twenty-two. Robert Burgholtz was a sergeant in the U.S. Army and his specialty was light weapons infantry. He was assigned to the one hundred and ninety-eight Light Infantry Brigade and the Forty-Sixth Infantry D Company. Sergeant Robert Burgholtz was awarded a Silver Star Medal and a Purple Heart. Robert is honored on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC Panel O eight W Line Ten. His name is inscribed on the Vietnam Memorial in Washington Park, Michigan City, and on the Vietnam Memorial in Soldiers Memorial Park in Laporte. There are many remembrances posted for Sergeant Burgholtz on the Honor Water webpage, which honors generations of our fallen service members, including these two. Honoring you. "Thank you for your service to our country so long ago, sir. Your Silver, your Silver Star Award attests to your courage and devotion. As long as you are remembered, you will always be with us." And that was posted on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, which is the anniversary of his birthday. And another one was Sergeant Robert E. Burgholtz. "Thank you for your valor in battle and thank you for serving America. I pray this day find you in the Lord's heavenly kingdom." And that was posted on July twelfth, twenty twenty, and that was the fiftieth anniversary of his, of his death in South Vietnam. Inscribed on the gravestone, on his gravestone are the words, "He loved life and being free. Let there be peace on earth." The Bridge Naming Committee would like the county bridge on one thousand north over the Galena River, which is very close to the Heckman Memorial Cemetery, to be named the Robert E. Burgholtz Memorial Bridge. The next one would be in honor of William Ingram of Willst Township. Our Laporte County records show that William Ingram was born in eighteen oh one in Maryland and arrived in Laporte County just prior to eighteen thirty-five. He settled in Section Twenty-eight, Willst Township. In eighteen thirty-seven, he purchased forty acres of land in Laporte County. Mr. Ingram continued to purchase additional land in Laporte County and some was also in St. Joseph County. And he, he was known as one of the larger landowners in the area. Mr. Ingram was identified in the county records as a pioneer in the development of Willst Township. He married Sarah Wagner in eighteen forty-nine, whose family was one of the originals, original settlers of Willst, Willst Township. They raised six children and Sarah continued living on the land adjacent to the cemetery for several decades after William's death in eighteen sixty-three. The Sacktown Cemetery, where he is buried, was originally in St. Joseph County in the land that he had purchased. In, it was conveyed by a deed dated March fifteenth, eighteen forty-six between William Ingram and St. Joseph County Commissioners for a sum of sixteen dollars. Four acres were to be used for a public burial ground and no other use whatsoever. According to Mr. Ingram's wishes, the cemetery was to be free to anyone who wanted to be buried there. In eighteen fifty, the legislature officially changed the boundary of the counties and placed six sections of land from St. Joseph County into Laporte County, and the cemetery was included in this transfer. The cemetery remained a public burial ground until June of nineteen seventy, when the cemetery was deeded by the Laporte County Commissioners to the Sacktown Cemetery Association. The Bridge Naming Committee would like the bridge located at two hundred south over Fish Creek to be named the William Ingram Memorial Bridge. The next bridge that we would like named is the, is for Isadora Edward Levine or Izzy Levine, as he was known to friends and strangers alike. He was a lifelong resident of Laporte County. He was born in Michigan City in eighteen ninety-seven and graduated from Michigan City High School in nineteen fifteen. Levine enrolled at the University of Michigan where he planned to study law and when he joined, and where he joined the ROTC. His studies were interrupted by World War One and he served in the U.S. Army, rising to the rank of captain. After the war, Isadora Levine returned to the University of Michigan Law School. In nineteen twenty-one, he graduated and opened his first law office in Laporte. Judge Levine was very active in veterans' affairs and was a charter member of the National American Legion, a charter member of the Hayman Gray Post of the American Legion in Laporte, and a member of the Jewish War, War Veterans of America. Judge Levine served as executive committeeman of the American Legion for many years. He was later elected and served as National Vice Commander of the American Legion. Isadora Levine was one of the originators of the annual Armistice Day, now Veterans Day, observances in Laporte on November eleventh. In addition to being president of the Laporte County Bar Association, a member of the Indiana Bar and the American Bar Association, Judge Levine was very active in the many, in many civic and philanthropic organizations of which he was a member. He served as president of the Quanist Club, was a life member and president of the Board of Directors of the Laporte YMCA, and exalted ruler of the Elks. Judge Levine was also a member of the Indiana Conservation Council, the Indiana Demolay Foundation, and the Orak Shrine. He was a member of the Masonic Lodge Scottish Rite and a member of the Order of the Eastern Star. Judge Levine rose to become a thirty-second degree mason and then received the honorary thirty-third degree, the highest honor that can be bestowed to Freemasonry. Judge Levine was appointed and served as president of the First Board of Trustees of Beatty Memorial Hospital. Judge Levine's business connections in Laporte County included president of his family's department stores, Levine's Boston Store, a member of the Board of Directors of Universal Woodcrafters, Inc. in Laporte, director of the Moore Richter Lumber Company, and president of the Laporte Theater Corporation. Judge Levine joined with his family to form the Levine Family of Laporte Foundation, which was and is still involved in, in Laporte County. Isadora Levine participated in the Goodwill Tour of the Legion Tolerance Trio in June nineteen thirty-nine, touring the state to bring about a more tolerant and true American spirit. Writing about his experience, Judge Levine said, "If in any small measure our effort, our efforts aided in bringing about a more tolerant and true American spirit, we feel very well repaid for our efforts. Each of us has enjoyed the experience and feel that our efforts were worthwhile. Tolerance is the trademark of a true democracy." Judge Levine served as deputy prosecutor, serving the Thirty-Second Judicial District for Indiana for twelve years. In nineteen fifty-five, Judge Levine's crowning glory was his appointment from Governor George Craig to serve on the Indiana Supreme Court. He was the first Jewish person ever to have served on the Indiana Supreme Court. In nineteen fifty-five, he was also chosen as the outstanding Jewish person in the state of Indiana. Judge Levine and his wife Roseanne lived and raised, lived in and raised their children in Laporte. He passed away in nineteen sixty-three. His funeral was attended by the sitting governor of the state of Indiana and three former governors. However, the most moving thing for his family was the countless people who told them simply, "Izzy was my good friend." The Bridge Naming Committee would like to name a bridge. We aren't sure what bridge yet. We had picked out one on four hundred north, just east of Johnson Road, but I'm trying to find one that's closer to Laporte since he was so active and involved in the city of Laporte. We'll let the, we'll, we'll announce it to you when we figure out which bridge. And then the last one is Captain Lucius T. Harding. Bruce, since you wrote this, do you want to read this one?
Oh, go ahead.
She's getting tired.
Okay.
You're doing a great job, Sue.
Oh, thank you. Captain Lucius T. Harding was a farmer, dairyman, stockman, and one of the most prominent and highly respected citizens in Laporte, but he was most well-known for operating his hotel, summer cottages, and his famous steamboats that traveled through Laporte's channels and lakes. Lucius was born to John and Elvira Dunham Harding in Mansfield, Richland County, Ohio, in eighteen thirty-four. When less than a year old, his family moved to Laporte County, Indiana, where he became one of the youngest citizens of Laporte. At that time, there were only three or four buildings in town, so the family camp near Clear Lake. Eventually, the Hardings bought Section Fourteen in Centertownship. Lucius was taught in a log schoolhouse near Laporte until he was fourteen. He then worked for his father, who had built one of the first saw and grist mills in Laporte County. They provided timber for the new lake shore and Michigan Railroad and the shops and turntable for the Laporte Depot. He was able to witness many major steps of progress over the years, including the stringing of the first telegraph wires across the county. When he was eighteen, Lucius T. Harding married Sarah Baker and for a while did some farming. In eighteen sixty-four, with the outbreak of the Civil War, he enlisted in Company G Twenty-third Indiana Volunteer Infantry. He was a non-commissioned officer of a company of fifty men at the Battle of Nashville. In eighteen sixty-seven, Harding purchased two hundred acres of land in Sections Twenty-one and Twenty-two in Centertownship on the north banks of Pine Lake and on both sides of Johnson Road. He became a successful farmer and stock raiser, and for twenty-five years, he had a dairy business with seventy-five cows. He was active in the Door Prairie Livestock Importing Association and spent two years in Europe in the early eighteen eighties, purchasing stock for the company and importing sheep for his farm. In eighteen eighty-six, Harding believed that his property on Pine Lake would be a good location for a summer resort, so he laid out thirty-five lots along the north shore for summer cottages and built the Pine Lake Inn Hotel. When the Laporte Country Club was organized, he leased more than fifty acres of his land along Johnson Road for what would become one of the finest golf courses in this part of the country. For years, Lucius ran steamers on Pine Lake and was most proud, proud of his title as Captain Harding. He built and operated at least five steamboats, one of, one of which was a favorite side wheeler. Many passengers could board the boats and enjoy the leisurely rides around Laporte's lakes. There was a five-hundred-foot drawbridge on Madison Street that would raise so boats could pass through the Clear Lake to Lily Lake. In eighteen ninety-two, Captain Harding helped dig a channel from Lily Lake to Stone Lake that went under a bridge on Wellar Ave. Later, he dug a channel from Stone Lake to Pine Lake, which was seven feet deep, sixty feet wide, and about a mile long. There were docks at the end of Detroit Street on Clear Lake by the Laporte Water Works, on Lily Lake at Holmes Island in the middle of, middle of Pine Lake, and at Camp Harding on the north shore of Pine Lake. Captain Lucius T. Harding passed away at the Holy Family Hospital in August of nineteen oh seven, and citizens were and citizens would always be... There was sorrow in the city and throughout the county over the passing of the most admirable man and citizen who would always be remembered walking down the docks to his steamboats in his captain's uniform. He's buried in LaPorte. The Bridge Naming Committee would like to name the bridge on Grange Mouth Drive over the Stone Lily Lake Channel, the Lucius T. Harding Memorial Bridge. And that is our recommendations for our bridges for these next six months.
Sue, Bruce, and your committee, thank you for that marvelous history lesson about our county. It's really admirable, the work that you do. You know, we are here because of the work and the lives of all those people that went before us, so thank you so much. Sue and I were talking before the meeting that we'd like to place on our county website so people who are interested in the history of our community can go there and, you know, perhaps do a bridge tour around LaPorte County, but have the stories behind them. I think that's a great educational tool and would be a great way to teach the history of our county. So I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendations of the Bridge Naming Committee.
Motion to approve all.
We have a motion and a second to approve all of the recommendations of the Bridge Naming Committee with our gratitude. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Great work.
Great work. So under New Business, Bruce, you have a spot now. Consider Museum Board's recommendation for curator and assistant curator, Mr. Johnson.
I'm Bruce Johnson. I am president of the LaPorte County Historic Society Board of Directors and county historian. I would like to introduce you, first of all, Savannah Jackson. She is the person we are recommending for the position of Assistant Museum Director. Savannah is from LaPorte County. She's a graduate of LaPorte High School. She's a graduate of St. Mary's College with a Bachelor of Arts degree in history. She has begun her Master of Science degree in history and did some work at the University of Edinburgh in Scotland. She has worked as an intern at the Archives at Indiana University in South Bend. And also like to introduce to you Daniel Adams for the position of Museum Director. Daniel is also from LaPorte County. She's a graduate of my fourth grade class at South Central, as well as South Central High School. She's a graduate of DePaul University with a Bachelor's degree in anthropology and minors in Italian and classical anthropology. She's begun her Master of Arts degree at Johns Hopkins University in museum studies. She's done internships at the Barker Mansion in Michigan City, the Institute for Field Research at Cape Cod, Massachusetts, and Temple University in Rome, in Rome, Italy. She has been our Assistant Museum Director since last August, so highly recommend both of these people for these two positions.
Bruce, thank you.
I would make a motion to approve both. Just so proud of our museum and so lucky to have these two ladies with this talent to be right here in LaPorte. It's amazing.
Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you for those strong recommendations. And ladies, we appreciate you stepping forward to help. Our historical museum is such a diamond, and we can really make it an educational tool for not only our county children, but the regional county children as well. So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve both of the recommendations of the Museum Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies. Next on the agenda, consider a presentation by Zach Rice and Samantha Duister.
Madam President, can we go back? I think you were going to consider 10B.
10B. Oh, sorry. I apologize. We took something out of order. So under Old Business, before we move ahead, consider remaining in the pending class action settlement in the Monsanto PCB case per our lead counsel's request.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the Commission. You recall, Environmental Counsel from the East Coast previously identified LaPorte, Lake, and Porter Counties and the city of Lake Station as appear to be the only four entities in Indiana they recommended opt out of the proposed class action settlement in the PCB litigation because of the amount of PCBs confirmed dumped in all four areas and the belief that each of the four entities could receive a much greater payout to help with cleanup obligations than staying in the class action. Well, as experts for the East Coast Counsel did further analysis, they found that the thresholds previously thought existed in the four entities did not exist. Counsel's come back, suggested the four entities simply remain in the class action. Fortunately, no formal filings have been made in the case, so there's nothing the county needs to do other than perhaps, again, reflect in the record that the suggestion of East Coast Counsel, the county is not proceeding with an opt-out. This is the benefit, by the way, of the contingency agreements because the contingency agreements provided with lead counsel, Indianapolis counsel, and my firm provide that nothing is paid by the county unless there's a recovery. So in this particular case, again, that's the nature of a contingency agreement, no case going forward, and as a result, no fees due to either East Coast Counsel, Indianapolis counsel, or my office. So all the time put on it, and that is then borne by the respective law firms. We would need a motion to essentially not opt out and to declare the contingency agreements with all firms null and void so that the pending class settlement can go forward as is.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remain in the pending class action settlement in the Monsanto PCB case. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it. Moving on to New Business, we will be at 11B on our agenda. Consider presentation by Zach Rice and Samantha Duister of Beam Longest Enough, designated by the state of Indiana to administer the state's Homeowners Assistance Program for homeowners with back due property taxes, insurance payments, or mortgage payments due to COVID-related issues. I believe they are online.
Yes, I am. Hi, hello, this is Zach Rice. Hold on, I can get you my video if you're looking at me. Everyone? Hi.
Hi there.
Good morning. Hey, the good news is, I'll be brief, and I come bearing good news. Maybe something that you guys can talk about or discuss during lunch today, but first, I'm Zach Rice. I am with Beam Longest Enough. We are a consulting firm based out of Indianapolis. We have about 77 years of experience in infrastructure projects. We currently are administering what's called the Indiana Homeowner Assistance Fund, or IHAF, on behalf of the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. IHAF is a mortgage assistance program for eligible Hoosiers experiencing hardship due to COVID-19. We provide three different assistance programs, monthly assistance, reinstatement, or both monthly and reinstatement. A little background about the money, from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or ARPA, the state of Indiana received about $167 million. In the last four months, we've built this program from the ground up. So far, we've received a little over 4,500 applications and have approved 600 of them for roughly $6 million so far. I looked this morning, in LaPorte, it looks like we've had 80 applications with 14 approvals for roughly $100,000. I'm just here today, wanted to provide awareness about the program to the Commission, answer any questions, and let you know that if you know of anyone in your community that needs assistance, please go to 877gethope.org.
Thank you, Zach. So that is a place where people can apply for the loans?
Correct. The program that we have set up, it is all online. You could actually do it from your cell phone if you have a smartphone. So if you go to 877gethope.org, there is a pre-qualify questionnaire that you can take. It's similar to 10 questions. It basically asks you the pre-qualification questions. Are you, you know, do you live in your home? Is your home in the state of Indiana? Goes through about 10 questions. It'll show if you pre-qualify or not, and then it's an online application. It's very similar to like a TurboTax, or it's a very similar program to that. You log in, and you can't move forward unless you answer all the correct questions, and you provide all of the information online, you upload all of the documents, and you submit it.
Thank you. I used the word loan. These are grants and assistance for people, correct? So not...
A great question. They are a forgivable loan. So a homeowner can get up to $35,000, and if they live in the home and they continue to live in the home for five years, they repay nothing. It decreases 20% each year. So there is a lien on the property through the state of Indiana for those five years as they're in their home.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mathias, you had asked, along with County Treasurer Joey Winsky, for me to contact...
That's right.
Mr. Rice and Ms. Duister, because as you pointed out, we've got a number of people who may be behind either on their mortgage, tax payments, or even insurance as a result of COVID, and this program is a great program that you and the treasurer identified as one that I know you wanted to get more word out on, and so hopefully this helps.
So I know that the treasurer, Ms. Winsky, has information on her countertop, so members of the public can go in and pick that up. But we also will be posting this on our website so that people can get the link and the web address online. So I think Tony's in the room. If you can make sure that that gets on our website by the end of the day today, that'd be terrific. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from anyone?
I'm good.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you spending time with us today.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Next on the agenda, consider technical support contract for stormwater permitting for MS4 with RA Smith, and consider contract with mypermittrack.com for permitting software. Director of MS4, Nicole Messicar.
Hi, how are you?
Good morning.
Do you have the contracts in front of you? Would you like...
If you have copies, sure.
Yes.
Yeah. We actually have it in our pocket.
Yes.
They're reminding me. Go ahead.
Okay, so I am just here to ask you...
If you could introduce yourself and your role, please.
Yep, Nicole Messicar, Stormwater Director. We recently submitted our notice of intent to have a program, so that means that now our requirements are starting to tick down as to when we need to get certain things accomplished. So I've been going through and trying to clean some things up and start new services for the county, and this is one of those services I would like to offer. Basically, what this will do is allow contractors, developers, and homeowners, as that may or may not apply, most homes don't have to have stormwater permits, but some do, to be able to use an online system for their permitting, so they can get online, fill out all their forms, upload all their documents. Contractors will be able to upload their own inspections, which I've been speaking with a few contractors over this past week with the rain, and they're really looking forward to being able to do that and not having to have a form that they scan and email and send back to me. So they'll be able to do this all in real time on their site. They won't have to go back to their desk. It'll simplify a whole lot of things for the public and also for me. It will keep really good documentation, which is a huge issue for our annual reporting. So this system has been set up specifically for stormwater programs so that as the information gets entered, it's basically building your annual report for you. I know that our previous department would sometimes spend a week or more collecting all of this documentation to put into an annual report for the state, so it's going to save a huge amount of time, and then nothing will get missed or overlooked. It'll all be kind of in one spot. I did, you know, have Shaw look over the contracts. I also had Darlene look at the program, Darlene Hale, IT Director, so I got her a login so she could get in there and check it all out, and she thought it was a good idea as well. So I think it'll benefit all of us to have this set up.
Okay, a few questions. So you have access, as people are downloading information, you have access to get into the system and review things and...
Yeah, absolutely, in real time, too. So I can see if a contractor is doing a self-inspection report, and it's showing that that self-inspection should be, let's say, in Kingsford Heights, but really I can see on the map that he's sitting in his office in Ohio. I can see that as it happens. So it'll allow more accountability as well. I can also add other users, so I've been working with the building department. I'm actually going to invite them to come to the training. We have a training set up on July 15 to go through this pending approval, of course, and I can add them as also, not really administrators, but contacts. So if I get a stormwater permit in, I can have it go to Janet Cole in the building department, and she can see that I've got a permit application, maybe she needs to do something on her end, or various, if I need to send something to the health department or whomever. So we can communicate across departments. If I have a particular, there's a particular site that might be of interest to you or anyone else in the county, I can add that, and then all those emails can go straight to the, yeah, the person.
Explain the funding for public information.
So this will come out of our non-reverting fund. It's a 30, I can't remember the exact amount, $3,600, $3,200 one-time setup fee that just sets up basically our library. So as you know, we are working on developing a stormwater technical manual that will be referenced in our ordinance when we get it done, so that I can tell developers, when you do your stormwater pollution prevention plan, just please reference our technical manual. That will get translated into a library online, so that as they're doing their plans and their reports, they're just clicking what we have already put in there as best management practices that are relevant to our specific, you know, area, whether our waterways, our watersheds, whatever we put in there. Sorry, I went off on a tangent. I think I forgot to finish telling you, so it's coming from our non-reverting funds. I will need to work with Shaw to amend the ordinance. Once I get a handle on some of the ordinances, there's some things that are, Joe and I were working yesterday to try to find some things that looks like they've been changed in the past, but I'm not finding supportive ordinances for that. But I will have to, as contractors, once we get the setup, submit plans, there will be an $89 project fee that will be associated with that, that will get added to the plan review fees that they pay now. So, yeah, just that setup fee is what we're...
Excellent use of technology to organize our data and have reports.
I believe so, yeah, I believe so.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion to support this contract.
Just been reviewed by attorney?
Yes.
Yes, I'm comfortable with both.
And did we redo the signature block? They had the signature on there for Nicole. It should actually be Commissioner's.
Yep, that was amended. If you don't have the current version of that, I do, if you would like to...
Motion to approve it.
It's there, okay.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contracts for stormwater permitting by Nicole Messicar and MS4 Director. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. If I just may, I'd like to touch on something our new director pointed out, and just say that she's been extremely diligent in going through and following up. We had a good meeting the other day, and kind of filling in some of those gaps and things that have been out there in the past or the past couple of years, and really making sure we're doing everything by the book and have all the supporting documentation for that. And it's been a big lift, but you've really, really come out swinging, so thank you.
Thanks, Shaw. Next on the agenda, consider resolution requesting LaPorte City and the county consultant, Lockmueller Group, to evaluate less intrusive and less costly ways to lessen the truck traffic in downtown LaPorte as opposed to the concept of an expensive and invasive bypass constructed on greenfield routes. So this issue has been on the docket for, I think it was on the docket before I came on board as Commissioner. It's gone back and forth, and we know that there's an issue with trucks, but we also have some routes that are less invasive, and our goal is to make sure that the community does not live in fear of losing their property, of families who have farms, families who have longtime homes and residence, businesses that don't want to move, that they, we look at ways of lessening the truck traffic, but using the roads that we already have and some of the routes. So I know Commissioner Resinck, you've been here a long time, said in a good fashion. And so you and Joe and I have talked about some less invasive routes. Can you give us kind of a summary of some of that and why you think those are preferred?
Actually, the idea of a bypass started, that I remember, back when Elmo Gonzalez was the mayor, and they had talked about Seaver's Road, of course. I lived on Seaver's Road then. Worked too crazy about it, but as he left office, nothing really happened. Kathy Croweback became the mayor, and she got a grant to look at it. Nothing happened. Lee Morris was the mayor. He got a grant before he left office. It started to get pretty wild at that point, being, going out through farmland, and that never went anyplace. And Kathy Croweback came back for a second term and talked about it, but nothing happened. Barbara Milo, I don't think she ever really talked about that. And then along came Mayor Dermody. To back up, when I first became Commissioner, that was six years ago, I inherited this process that had been approved by NERPC. that had been approved by NERPC to do a study through the Lockmueller Group and propose bypass to get the trucks out of downtown. And they were concerned, always have been concerned, that when the KIP finally does break loose, and trust me, it is moving very slow, but it is moving. There is a lot of interest in Kingsbury now that we're getting very close to having at least one Class 1 railroad entering the park. So the thought of a lot of trucks, which if they don't go down 6 to 421, they'll come straight through town. They wanted to limit the, on a truck traffic come up 35, also coming in on 4, also coming in on 2. When I first learned of this, I talked with a couple of the folks from Lockmueller, took them in my pickup truck, and we started off on 35, and we drove up Boyd Boulevard, which was originally supposed to be part of a bypass. We turned left and came down Boston Street, which when Kathy Krowback, there, she got a grant, I said, you spent a lot of money, I think like $5 million bucks, to completely redo that whole street. It's bigger, wider, and would hold truck traffic, which takes you out to Genesis, which takes you out to Seaver's Road. Some years ago, there was an ordinance back, I don't even think I was on the council at that time, but it'd been a long time ago, to allow semis to come off of 39 to come down Seaver's to Genesis, period. In the meantime, if you travel that way once in a while, you'll see trucks come in off of 2, down Fayette Road, come around that nasty curve, and take the entire length of Seaver's Road, which is not really what we want. We already have an ordinance that allows trucks to come from 39 to Genesis. Genesis comes through out to Boston Street, which was already established to be for trucks, which takes you right down to Boyd Boulevard, which was originally supposed to be the bypass. So we've had this laying there in front of us all the time. And when we look at some of these ideas, they had a cutting through people's yards, cutting through people's farmland. And the more we talked about it, and we've got a lot of people alarmed about it, I have friends that live out there where they would be, they wanted to cut up farmland and run this bypass right down by their homes. They've been friends of mine for a long, long time. They don't want it. It doesn't make sense. You already have an established route. I was never really in favor of running down Seaver's Road from Genesis, but that happened before me. The people who live out there have kind of come to terms to have to live with it. We don't foresee making it into a four lane, anything like that. I think it's probably the least invasive of all of the ideas that have come up. I've asked Lockmueller and asked the mayor several times. Every time we have a meeting on this, you show me four different possibilities. Narrow it down. Show me something that, not maybe or what if, show me something that makes sense. This, the latest thing that we've seen, makes a lot more sense than anything I've seen prior. So.
So I would like to read the resolution into the record. I wanted you to have, give kind of a historical perspective because long before Joe and I came along, you had a lot of that history with previous administration.
Nice way of saying I'm old.
No, I'm just acknowledging that you're, you've been here a bit. So we have a resolution from the Board of Commissioners of the Laporte County, Commissioner of Laporte County, Indiana. Whereas the city of Laporte and Laporte County have jointly retained the engineering design firm Lockmueller Group to propose solutions to reduce the amount of heavy truck traffic in downtown Laporte. And whereas Lockmueller's recommended alternatives for a bypass, and we have a graphic enclosed to the resolution, tend to utilize little to no existing roadways, but rather propose expensive greenfield alternatives that would require acquisition and condemnation of numerous homesteads and farms at an estimated expense of some $150 to $180 million and create significant disruption for homeowners, farmers, and business owners in the proposed corridor. And whereas it is the desire of this commission to allay concerns expressed by residents, farmers, and business owners who fear condemnation proceedings in the case of landowners in the proposed route or dilution of the value in the case of those whose properties would border or be adjacent to the planned corridors. And whereas we wish to formally request that the Lockmueller Group study a far less intrusive plan that would simply see some improvements to existing Boyd Boulevard without widening, which was constructed in the early 1970s as a bypass around Laporte, and then to utilize Boston Street, recently widened and improved by the city of Laporte, as a northerly route off of Lincoln Way, going north to Larson, becoming Genesis Drive, and then past Rose Industrial Park, to then utilize existing Seaver's Road in its current two-lane configuration rather than widening any of these existing roads to four lanes. And whereas we believe this option would accommodate some diversion of truck traffic from downtown Laporte, leaving local deliveries, and accomplish what is needed without the massive disruption and distress to local homeowners, business owners, and farmers with property both north of Lincoln Way in Center Township and to the southeast of Lincoln Way in Pleasant Township, those who fear losing their properties to eminent domain or significant devaluation. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners expressly rejects the current recommended alternatives by Lockmueller Group and requests intensive study on the use of existing roadways to divert traffic from downtown Laporte specifically. Number one, make improvements to the surface and substructure of Boyd Boulevard without any widening or additional property required. Number two, make improvements to the surface and substructure of Seaver's Road for truck traffic, similar to its current use for truck traffic to and from Rose Industrial Park, without widening Seaver's Road to four lanes. This board will not support the highly intrusive and expensive greenfield routes proposed by Lockmueller Group and instead supports reasonable improvements to the surface and substructures of Boyd Boulevard and Seaver's Road in their current two-lane configuration without the need for widening or further property condemnation or acquisition. All of this resolved this day of July 2022 by the Board of Commissioners. I would entertain a motion or.
Have a public, public hearing on that?
Sure. Oh, yes, that's right. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing, so any members of the public who are here to speak to this issue can speak, and there may be some people on Zoom as well. So this would be a time for you to express your concerns or support for this resolution.
I had absolutely no plans on speaking on this issue.
Would you announce who you are?
Tim Stamos, 1501 Michigan Avenue. I had no plans to speak on this issue. I hadn't even noticed it on the agenda. I've studied this issue for a long time. I was a city councilman for two terms in Laporte City. I will start by saying I don't appreciate the commissioners playing politics around this issue and trying to appeal to people on the basis of fear. I think there are legitimate concerns to be had, and you bring up a good point. It's been a question that I've had for myself around the less expensive route of potentially using a Seaver's-Boston combination. I think it's a legitimate and a very interesting question about whether this can be kept to the 10s or whatever millions as opposed to a couple hundred million. These are legitimate questions. I do not want to see this commission here next year dealing with the same matters and pandering to the people of Seaver's Road and saying, oh, you're trying to have it all here. We don't want the big route because it's going to take up farmland. Oh, but we're not going to widen Seaver's, and we're not going to widen anything else because we don't want to offend the people on Seaver's. So my anger right now is I perceive that you're playing politics because you're up for reelection, quite frankly. This is an important issue, and it's a legitimate issue. And it's an issue that Mr. Freeman and I have actually been allied on conceptually. The long-term interest of the city of Laporte is to get the trucks out and have sidewalk cafes. We have people trying to invest in the downtown, and they're having a hard time doing it, and earning return. We just had a bar open up with an open window front that's reminiscent of the most desirable urban parts of Chicago and other places that could draw and make Laporte desirable. There's a long-term interest to get trucks off of the southern, as Mr. Marzinski, Commissioner Marzinski, well-put, get those trucks out of Laporte, and to upscale the city to make it more desirable and to make it a place that, that people are going to want to live. And it brings jobs. It's the rising tide that lifts all boats. So I'm a little angry right now because my own perception is you didn't need a resolution. You didn't need a political resolution. What you needed was simply to hire Lockmueller professionally as commissioners and not politicize this issue. And as a 30-year resident of Laporte and a two-term city councilman, I resent the fact that you're politicizing this issue. That's my perception. I could be wrong, but I think you're politicizing the issue. These are worthwhile things to look at, but the notion that you're trying to have the whole enchilada by saying, don't want to offend the people on Seaver's Road, don't want to offend the farmers, don't want to offend anyone, is playing politics, and that's wrong.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
My name is Matt Stock. I spoke a little bit earlier. I'd like to kind of chime in here.
Hello, Matt.
As I mentioned, I'm a resident of Fayette Road, and the A2, A4 option would go right through the middle of my house as well as impacting 10, probably dislocating 10 other direct neighbors. And with the noise and everything, would definitely be impacting about 70 other people just on my side of Highway 2. And with respect to what the gentleman just said as far as the board's potential pandering to the Seaver's Road residents and everything, the fact that there's not looking at expansion or running the road through anybody's house, nobody will be losing their home, as opposed to our, the solution by this, this place that has gone out to look at other options, you know, you referenced, you know, going through the fields, but it's more than just going through the fields and green space. It's going through people's homes. It's turning entire subdivisions out to the south of Highway 2 into basically a very noisy zone where we've lived very quietly in the past. It impacts a lot more than just, you know, running some highway through the fields. And if you look at the alternate, the alternatives that they came up with, they did do a significant research into options for southern alternatives, northern alternatives. Their preferred alternative, again, happens to go right through the middle of my house. So I'm not a fan of that, and I'm, of course, biased accordingly. But I do believe, as the board has pointed out, that there are many opportunities that are there that were set in place and have not been properly vetted. Boyd Boulevard, again, was intended for that use. And when do you stop if you should make a, you have a half-built bypass, which is Boyd, and then you build another bypass, maybe a half a mile out, and then realize, oh, Laporte's growing really fast. Now you have to build another bypass, another mile out. I mean, you end up like Indianapolis where it's just, you know, circle upon circle upon circle. And in reference to, you know, the shop owners and people moving in downtown and they're, you know, wanting sidewalk traffic, you know, you moved into Laporte and you saw what you're getting. Laporte has had a very hard time retaining higher-end restaurants. I'm very aware of that as a patron of some of those. And it, and Laporte does need to grow, but we don't need it to be Chicago, in my opinion. Laporte doesn't have a university like Valpo does to bring in the street traffic kind of like cafe on the sidewalk feel. In my opinion, Laporte would be much better off improving the area on the other side of the, of the bridge where all of the, you know, Starbucks and all that's going in with the new apartments. It's a much more conducive, nicer area than, than having to basically revamp the entire downtown, saying that you're just trying to get truck traffic off, you know. Most of the trucks downtown are trucks that are delivering to downtown. We've got all of these Dollar General stores that are right downtown. Well, they need truck traffic. You know, Pepsi doesn't come in on a, you know, four-by-four pickup truck. All these trucks are traveling around. They're not all just looking to escape the city. They're looking to come into the city, and they have to have ways of getting around. Before, you know, I spoke to, I believe, as a city engineer, and he said the bridge there at Fayette Road wasn't really built with the support of constant semi-truck traffic, but that would be a much, you know, cheaper solution than this $100 million, $200 million, you know, fiasco out through the fields. Nobody seems to want to deal with the state because I was asking lots of questions at the last meeting that they had. But, you know, they could abandon the State, the Highway 2 parking and build that area out to a certain degree and then block off some of those cross-street traffic so you don't have so many stoplights. We don't need a stoplight every block. I mean, that's kind of ridiculous. That's just to touch on a few things. There are so many things that the Laporte City could do to help themselves before going to this extent. And, you know, I don't really see what you guys are doing here as political pandering or anything. I think, you know, there's a lot of people that are upset, and yes, this, you can't make everybody happy. And whether it be Seaver's Road or whether we end up doing, going out through the middle of the country, I realize, you know, hey, I may lose this battle and I may lose my home. And, you know, I've been a resident of this area my entire life. I'm 50 years old, so, you know, this does mean something to me. But, you know, I will live with whatever the outcome is because realistically, I have no choice. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. A gentleman in the room, thank you. Please just say your name and your address, please.
Timothy Cavender, 4848 North Range Road, Laporte. I'm also president of Say No to Laporte Corridor Foundation, an organization, a nonprofit organization we formed earlier this year to address this issue and the concerns of the residents of Laporte County who are directly affected by the proposed corridor. And I just simply wanted to come before you and thank you for being cognitive of and listening to the voices and concerns of the citizens of Laporte County, and we appreciate this resolution, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Are there any members of the public on Zoom who wish to speak at this time, either for or against the resolution? All right, hearing now, the public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion.
Madam President, before we make the motion, I have some comments. So one of the things, taking office roughly 18 months ago, one of the things for at least nearly the first half of my tenure here so far, I heard comments from the city as far as we're working with the county, we're working with the county, we're working with the commissioners. And it wasn't until I made a pretty public announcement that I had never received anything for the first half of my term on the Laporte County bypass, on the, on this corridor slash bypass. At that point, I did meet with a representative from the city. They laid out some of the, some of the different alternative routes. And I think it's important to put in the context here, and I understand what Auditor Stamos was, was saying and going with as far as trying to have your cake and eat it too, as far as talking, you know, trying to press some of these other issues and appeal to all sides. My issue with everything that's been presented to me thus far, not just the fact that no one was really communicating with any of us from the city, and definitely not myself until I made a pretty public display of, you're saying you're having these meetings, you're doing these things. Well, the three people who need to vote on it to approve it were not being included, at least I wasn't anyway. So when I saw these initial plans that were laid out, it's multifaceted. We've heard about the disruptions of people's homes, people's farms, not just, you know, some people thinking, oh, well, you know, you just put a line, you know, a road through the middle of a farm, it's farmland. You've got farmers who have, who farm now two sides of a major roadway. You've got to get farm equipment to and from both sides of those, of that. There's all these different issues. There's also other issues that were involved. In order to make this work, in order to get basically $180 million into this, the proposal from the city was basically 80% of the money, we're going to get the state to kick in, 20%, 10% is going to come from the county, and 10% is going to come from the city. That's $18 million from the city, $18 million from the county. That's a lot of money. We're, quite frankly, not even keeping up with maintaining the roads that we have right now. And now we're going to spend $18 million on building, on helping the city of Laporte build a bypass. Doesn't make sense. Then you look further into it and think, well, why is the state of Indiana going to kick in 80% of $180 million, you know, roughly dollars? And given everything that we've seen in construction costs that have gone up, it's probably going to be well over $200 million project, probably somewhere in the neighborhoods of $250 million for the major routes that were presented. The state, what the state of Indiana would get out of it is that they would make the county assume about 60 additional miles of roadway that the county would have to maintain. The city would also be, would be assuming road miles. So for example, State Road 2, as it sits now between 421 and the city limits of Laporte, that would become a county road. The state would turn it over to the county. We would have to maintain that. So State Road 2 then would not come across at 421, head to the city of Laporte. It would go south on 421, all the way down to 6. 6 then would, and 2 would be merged, go all the way down, 35, 39, come back up and then around to the bypass. 39, for example, there, that would be from Route 6 up to the city limits of Laporte. The county would have to assume that. We'd have to repair it, maintain it, plow it, do all that work. That road would be rerouted east, heading down, and then down 6, up 35, and then out toward the bypass and all the way around. That's just some of what you're looking at. So again, we, we haven't been allocating, in my opinion, enough money to maintain the roads that we have. We're falling behind, in my opinion. And now the city of Laporte wants us to assume roughly 60 new miles of road that we're going to have to maintain and prepare for. I brought. that we're going to have to maintain and prepare for. I brought this up as we can't afford that. And the response was, well, the, the state, whenever state turns over roads to counties, they give you a influx of cash to get whatever the current state of the road is, in their opinion, up to 100%. So the county would have gotten an infusion of cash, millions, if not tens of millions of dollars. That's today. That does not address our concerns going forward. And it's initial influx of cash that, quite frankly, is going to wind up going and dumping into what would have been the $18 million to build, to kick in for our portion of the road anyway. It's not right to take, you know, we see different infrastructures in different cities across the state, across the nation, where they do these little kickstart projects, they get an infusion of cash upfront, and then flash forward 10, 20, 30 years from now, you have massive crumbling infrastructure everywhere that nobody can keep up with. You're looking at increasing all sorts of taxes in order to pay for the things that you should have had in place to begin with. So, there's so many issues with the things that I've seen that while, while it should just be simple enough, in my opinion, we should just be pulling out of this, 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 this entire bypass debacle and, and, and removing ourselves from the equation completely and let the city of LaPorte just figure this out. I, I am going to support this, I am going to support this resolution because the, at least the first half of it, we can't get the county involved in this and we can't put this kind of burden and these kinds of issues on people today, right now, immediately, let alone on our children and grandchildren for what the, what the financial implications of doing something like this would be toward the county. The city wants to figure that out, that's fine, but the county certainly cannot afford to do something like this whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to say Joe Hinni and I agree 100% on something. That is really great. So as the three chief executives of this county, our job is to make the tough calls, politics or not politics. I came against the bypass in my first year when people said it's going to cost 180 million. I said, what, where are we going to get 180 million dollars? That's our money. That's our money. You make a really good point about maintaining. Once the county, the state gives you a road, the state gave the city of Michigan City, Michigan Boulevard. It sounded like a great deal at the time. Didn't happen on my watch, I might add, but a mayor that accepted that gift and they did get an influx of money. But then the city has to plow it, has to stripe it, has to pave it, has to maintain it for ad infinitum. So long after that money goes away, the city of Michigan City now has a huge road that they have to take care of. And that would happen in this case as well. So, politics or no politics, I came against this early on. I've said it in public numerous times, two years ago, three years ago, I think this is a terrible idea. The city of LaPorte, we have tried to play nice, but at this point, the executives for the county need to take a stand for the citizens who we represent and say, this is our money, this is too much money, and it doesn't make good sense.
And as we've stated, this has been something that's going on for six years, probably, well, actually longer than that because it was, I inherited it in my first year as commissioner. That was six years ago. So it was already going on. But the contract with Lockmueller is bought up and the city is looking, as Joe mentioned, they want to give up these highways, which are going to be ours for the rest of time. And that means, and as you mentioned with going into, to Michigan City, that was another deal where, yeah, Michigan City got a whole bunch of money for that. Now they have to maintain it forever, except for the bridge, right before you get to Johnson Road, the city just said, we don't do bridges. That belongs to the county now. So now we're looking at a project for a couple million dollars to rebuild the Doggone Bridge because it's not good. These relinquishments like that, they, they come back to bite you because I, as I said, they're forever. Things are in the hopper to, to move in that direction. So, the timing is of the essence. We've been, we've been looking at this. I've been invited to a lot of different meetings with the city. They can't seem to come up with a, an idea, let's do this. It's, well, we might do this, or we might do that, or we might do that. And like any of them, this is least invasive. It's, time is of the essence to do it now, before it's too late. It has nothing to do with politics. It's the timing of the project. We need to make a stand on it and we need to do it now before we get into this relinquishment of the highways, which, like I said, we'd be stuck with them forever. And down the road, be really expensive to maintain. Right off the get go, you got more stuff to plow, to patch. So, given that information, I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution right now.
I have a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution, requesting LaPorte City and County Consultant Lockmueller Group to evaluate less intrusive and less costly ways to lessen the truck traffic with the details, as I outlined in reading the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, do we need to do that on one reading or does it have to be?
Since it's not an ordinance, you've, you've done it, you've passed it, and it's now the resolution of the adopted by the board.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider Share Foundation's broadband request for Sharing Meadows Residential Community for Other Able Adults and grant them permission to approach the council for funding. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Madam President, members of the commission, truly, just to give, I believe, a very appropriate setting of the table, if you will, for this request, which we would seek your support in approaching the LaPorte County Council. I would like to introduce to you Mr. Bill Harmon, who serves as the Executive Director of the Share Foundation. If you could, Bill, and Bill will conclude and I will wrap up after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. I really appreciate being here. So like Tony said, my name is Bill Harmon. I'm the Executive Director of Share Foundation with the Handicap. We're located at 6617 North 300 East in LaPorte, right behind Rolling Prairie. So about 40 years ago, a priest by the name of Father Dennis Blaney had a vision and it was for people with disabilities. Someone approached him after one of his masses. He, he, he was the priest in Michigan City at Sacred Heart for nearly 30 years. And someone approached him and said, what is there for my son or daughter? And he said, well, there isn't much. And so what he decided was to grow a program on 185 acres of, of rural farmland and transform it into 15 homes, a camp building. We have 30 residents with intellectual disabilities that live there, work there, and we're incredibly unique. There's only about four or five organizations in the entire country that operate like us as our own community, where they have safe places where they can ride their bikes on the roads and be in a safe, loving environment. And so what we're asking is for consideration for acceptable broadband internet. Currently, we have an education program that is sponsored by Purdue Northwest and we have college professors actually coming onto our property and teaching our residents. See, when people with disabilities graduate high school, it's about 21 or 22, they typically will go directly into a work program, learning how to work at a local MIA or do different jobs. But what we tend to forget is, we all deserve a better education and to continue their education. While they never had the chance to go to college, we've made that possible. And just in the last eight months of starting this program, we have seen incredible, incredible increases in their ability to do math, change making and different things. And that's all without internet. We don't have any internet on our property besides our office and its satellite. It's very slow, very, very slow, and it's hard for us to even carry out our duties. And I just think, you know, with the Zoom, I was amazed today, the connection that there is, is unbelievable. I think back in 2020, when we had to shut everything down, our residents couldn't see their families, right, because of COVID. Many of us felt that. I went to every single house on a daily about, well, probably about a weekly basis, just so that they could FaceTime with their families on my iPhone. Otherwise, they wouldn't have had any opportunity to see them. They were struggling. And that's something that in 2020, we said as a team, we have to find a way. For goodness sakes, they can't even watch the newest movie on Disney Plus, right? And so it's a quality of life issue. And at Sharing Meadows, we take, we take that in all quality of life issues into consideration. And it's always been that missing piece of the puzzle. To increase our education program, to be able to bring more people than just our residents all throughout LaPorte County and even Northwest Indiana, to be able to create programs, it, it all starts with better and acceptable broadband. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to speak to you about the important issue that our residents face with lack of connectivity.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate your comments.
So, as you can see, the, the bill, the, the challenge that Bill has just painted for you is not one new to LaPorte County whatsoever. I, I thought what was critical for me to, to put in perspective is the fact that we, we were truly blessed earlier this year with the support of the state of Indiana's Next Level Phase Three, the Third Times a Charm Grant Application. And that's going to go a very long way at getting all of our unserved connected to broadband level speeds. However, that, that process was a rigorous address level, very scrutinized by the state, scrutinized by competitors. And this is a prime example of those that may have been left out in that grant process. The, the closest serving entity to Bill, based on their research, was the vendor that is shown in an attachment to your letter that was submitted. And we forwarded that to you via email. And we had them put together a cost estimate to get fiber optic connectivity down to that, to this location. Now, as they extend the, the infrastructure, they're going to be passing eight additional non-served addresses that are not part of the, the next level connectivity program. So that, that is why we're, we're standing here before you today. This is one of those that fall into that gray area of, of not meeting the program guidelines and, and just simply being on the fringe of servable through next level. And, and we want to be the, I guess, the tip of the arrow in starting the work of the LaPorte County Rural Broadband Task Force in setting up a fund to, to address these areas that fall into the challenged unmet by any of the state programs currently. And lastly, I'd follow with, because of the fact that the state selected LaPorte County as a broadband ready community, because of the fact that we've had these aggressive pursuit of, of grant applications, Commissioner Holtry at the state level with the broadband office has indicated to us, they will be inviting us to serve on their, the billion dollar federal grant that will come to the state of Indiana. They will, the state will need to come up with a plan on how to best deploy that at the local level. So the nice thing is, we're going to have a seat at that table and they're going to begin a very aggressive planning process as to how to best spend that federal money very soon here. So while we're fortunate, we're, we're feeling good about our future opportunity, this currently sits as a genuine challenge unmet.
So Tony, what is the amount, just for the public knowledge, our goal here today is to hear what the Share Foundation, what their needs are in Rolling Prairie to serve the other able adults who live on that 185 acres of unserved property that's kind of like in Medicare language, it's the donut hole. That's the part that the, the other grant, some of the other connectivity is meeting, but they're in kind of that donut hole. And they're not alone in the county. There are some other areas as well. So we're proposing building a fund to address that out of ARP money. But specifically to the Sharing Meadows, what is the ask for, to go to the, the county council?
The ask would be for 142,468, and that is fiber optic infrastructure necessary to come from that nearest point and, and stop literally right before the toll road, which could at a future date be extended under the toll road and then potentially to the EMS base. Part of what we've been talking about at the task force level is how do we connect all schools? How do we connect all public buildings? This could be the start of that. But the request, what we're seeking today is for the 142,468 to extend fiber optic infrastructure, passing eight residences, and then ultimately serving the Share Foundation's property.
So would those eight residents have the opportunity to get internet as well?
Absolutely.
Because they are unserved right now?
They sure will be.
All right.
And the infrastructure provides for that.
Okay, those are eight Rolling Prairie residents and families. Okay. I'd like to read into the record the letter that the Share Foundation prepared for the county commissioners and then ask my colleagues for a motion. So, Dear County Commissioners, nearly 60 years ago, a priest by the name of Father Dennis Blaney had a dream of providing camp programming and residential living to adults with intellectual disabilities. Father Blaney saw all of the programming for children with disabilities, but noticed that once they graduated from high school, all of the resources ended and they were left to be on their own, living with their parents. Father Blaney wanted more for them, so he began working and fundraising for a community located right here in LaPorte County. Right off of Highway 20 on North 300 East, you will find Sharing Meadows. We have 185 acres of beautiful property with 15 residential homes with two adults with disabilities living, as well as 6,400 square foot of camp building. We host more than 250 adults every year, a senior center, a guest house, two lakes, and an in-ground pool. All of this is to provide a great quality of life for the most incredible people you will ever meet, the villagers of Sharing Meadows. Being that our property is in rural LaPorte County, we do not have access to quality internet. That is why I'm requesting help in the form of aid to provide better internet for my friends, the villagers of Sharing Meadows. We recently began an education class taught by college professors, the first of its kind, and international, internet accessibility would allow our villagers to study in the evenings and play educational games online. Our villagers often, often express how they wish they had internet just to even Google something that they want to learn. Connectivity is everything in today's society and we are hoping to bring that to their lives. It is also our opinion that the, the opportunity for better internet besides satellite will increase productivity for our staff, which ultimately will increase the quality of life of our villagers. I appreciate the opportunity to express our needs and for your consideration. With your support, we have an opportunity to drastically increase our villagers' quality of life and the quality of life for generations of villagers to come. Respectfully, William Harmon, the Executive Director. On the board, listed on the, there's quite a few individuals. Father Dennis Blaney is president, James Farrell, Vice President, Lawrence Hussey, Secretary, Thomas Hatoot, Treasurer, Kurt Catlin, Colleen Collins, Dr. Esparr, Marcia Forsy, Michael Grant, Lynn Haverstock, Bree Hussey, Dr. Jane Kelly, Raymond Kozlowski, Dr. Anthony McCrovitz, Charles McNellis, Frances Marion, Robert Nixick, Dennis Schultz, John Wojcik, and of course, Mr. Harmon. So I, I guess I wanted to make sure that the letter was read into the record so we could, you know, signal to the county council that this is for other able adults, but that the Share Foundation has great community support and has for the last 30, 40 years. I would entertain a motion from my colleagues.
Motion of support and with permission for Tony and Mr. Harmon to approach the county council for funding, preferably from ARP, hopefully.
Hopefully.
That's my motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to support the resolution that I read into the record and then to give permission to Tony Rodriguez, our Economic Development Director, with the Share Foundation Board of Directors, to approach the council for funding with the preference that it come from ARP funding because ARP funding was, this is broadband and, and connectivity is perfectly within the confines of ARP, but certainly leave that up to the county council to, to figure out how, how to fund this request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Tony, if, while you're looking at some of this, I say there's going to be a couple other residences that'll be positively impacted if the council approves one for this. If you could take just a glance at those other spurs right there and if there's a way to include just a little bit of offshoot, still keep the costs reasonable, but if there's a way to grab just a little bit more as that line goes up there, that, that, that may make it better for the entire community up there. So.
I love the way you're thinking. You're right on track and we'll stay in communication on that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Commissioners.
Sure. Thank you. Next on the agenda, create a task force to address limiting, damaging gypsy moth infestation in northern LaPorte County. We have a, a, we've had a discussion internally about creating a task force. I know there, there are members of the public who would like to speak at this time and I see there's a few people online that I know would like to speak. So let's open it up to the public and then we'll discuss the task force as, after that. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak in regards to this or anyone online? Anyone from the public who wishes to speak in regards to this, or anyone online who wishes to speak?
Good morning, commissioners.
If I may? Sure.
This is Bill Nelson. I'm a partner attorney at Bradie Nelson, James, and Michigan City, and my home address is 4144 West Schultz Road in La Porte. I am what is referred to by many in the know about gypsy moths, also known as spongy moths. I'm in what is referred to as the Johnson Road Schultz Road corridor, that I understand some of the experts are identifying as one of the largest infested areas in our county. It's amazing what you learn when all of a sudden you find yourself dealing with an infestation that you've never had. I'll just say this quickly, for 42 years, my family has owned the home that my wife and I now live in. My parents owned it for the first 15 years. In the 42 years, we've never experienced what we are experiencing now, and which started just last year. In the process of the research I've done, I've learned that La Porte County is really kind of the southern border of the ever-increasing and moving line in a southwest direction from the northeast, where gypsy moths are continuing to move and take over more and more areas. For example, Michigan is fully infested, but the state and the counties have taken action to deal with the infestation. La Porte County, the northern part, is now heavily infested. I spoke with attorney Scott Keller recently, whose practice is in South Bend and has a home out in the Hudson Lake area. This is his third year, and he's a little northeast of even where I and some of my neighbors that are present, Ms. Warrenke. He's a little further northeast, so it doesn't surprise me that his started a year earlier. And it's moving very quickly. He has about 60 acres of woods. This year, he informed me that he spent $4,000 of personal funds to crop dust his property to try to deal with the infestation, because his leaves, the trees are being completely defoliated. Two years of defoliation, those trees will not survive. They will perish. It's a mess for us homeowners. I appreciate you sending out the county attorney to my property just to get a visual of what's going on. Right now, I'm not suffering massive defoliation, but if you stand under any of my trees and look up, there's not a leaf that is intact. They have all been shredded, consumed by these, while they're in caterpillar stage. And of course, while they're in those trees consuming all these leaves, they defecate. And if you have any hard surfaces like I do, such as decks and driveways underneath these leaves, you get massive amounts of this moth feces that builds up. Unfortunately, Attorney Friedman found himself standing on top of that as he stood on my deck, and I had to caution him to make sure he cleaned his shoes off before entering his home. This infestation, while it's very inconvenient for us property owners, I for one, and I know many others, we don't expect the county to involve itself due to our inconvenience. That is something that we chose to live in these environments, and that's something on us to deal with. But I can tell you this, I am 100% convinced that if our county does not take action, within a year or two, our entire county will be infested, and we will have a massive problem as trees will die off in significant numbers, devaluing properties, the value of properties, and many, 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 many more residents from our county will be showing up and begging for help. I can also tell you this, Brian Mann from Tree Man, his schedule didn't permit him to attend today, but he has offered to come and speak to any groups, any task force, anyone who is interested in hearing what he is noticing as a tree expert. He doesn't just trim trees. Brian has certifications in many different areas of tree science. He knows about these gypsy moths, he's studied them himself, and he can also be a help-educator task force. But on behalf of myself, my family, all my neighbors on Schultz Road, I want to thank Kevin and Diane Warrenke for spearheading this up. We thank you for your quick action. Literally, it was just nine days ago that we got to first present this issue to the county council, and they were very interested and showed their concern and interest in moving forward. We thank you for so quickly getting us on your agenda. You know, you think of moths and caterpillars as a harmless issue. They will be if the county continues to do what it's doing and take this with action and develop this task force, get educated, learn about the processes and the procedures and the methods to help slow the spread and deal with this infestation before it literally consumes our county trees. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I happen to be listening to your presentation at the county council meeting, and I heard some of your neighbors also testifying. And in the comfort of my home, where I don't have gypsy moths, I was pretty horrified, because every homeowner could feel your angst and kind of disgust about, you were describing some of the distasteful parts of the infestation. So the next morning, Randy Novak and I spoke, and I spoke to my colleagues here on the commission and said, you know, if we don't do something, it will hurt the rest of the county, not just your neighborhood. Your neighborhood unfortunately is where it seems to be rooted and started. And so we then called the DNR, and we're really interested in how can we, as a county, work with the neighbors to stop the spread and reduce the damage? So, thank you.
Appreciate that. One thing I would add that I don't know about is the health impact. When I talk about caterpillar feces, I mean, Attorney Friedman can speak to what he noticed. We're not talking about small amounts. We're talking about significant portions on a daily basis that have to be dealt with on a daily basis before it gets wet, because when it gets wet, it gets even worse. But I have got to assume that there are health risks involved, and I would encourage the task force to try to get some folks involved in the health community as well that can speak to what the potential health risks are, because that might even be far more terrifying than the defoliation. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thanks. Are there any other members of the public who are present that would like to speak?
Yes, I just want to reiterate this with...
If you could just introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Diane Warrenke, and from 600 West, and my husband Kevin is with me. I'm always the talker. Anyway, now we're doing this thing, the caterpillars are kind of going away, and so we're getting the moss. And I feel like I went back to college through this with Phil Marshall. He's been in contact with me regularly. And now these moths are laying their little white bodies around the trees, and the males, and I'm catching males. So in a 24-hour period, I caught 552 moss on my two acres, on our two acres of property, right?
Seven little traps.
I have seven little traps. That's it. So we're two acres, and we're all bunched together all the way down to Bill's house, you know, that whole Schultz Road county. I've talked to the moomas in Junkheim, and they are now experiencing, it sounds like, first year. So one of the things that I want you to consider when you do this task force is, I really think we need to have community members, somebody that can make sure we're getting the word out about this and getting, because for me, I never wanted to be here at this meeting. This is not my gig at all. But I am telling you that the frustration level and the tears and the people that have lived this, and if I could approach the bench, I'd just like to show you what I encountered yesterday with these moths on my trees. And my husband and I spent three hours yesterday in the heat scraping eggs and dealing with these moths and counting. Because Phil doesn't, Phil is asking me to give him information, so I am giving him this stuff. So he's helping to identify things with us, and I am, like I said, it's a learning process. I feel like I went back to school, but I think I'd rather take care of people. But anyway, I just want to approach to show you, this is what we're dealing with now with the egg masses. And of course, they go all the way up the trees. Now that, those white moss will hatch out about 1,000 eggs apiece.
Ew.
And so that's how many caterpillars will be streaming around here, and we're just on, they've just probably come out of hatch in the last 24 hours, because that's the first females I've seen.
Wow.
The males are kind of tame. And so people directly around the corner from me don't even know what they are.
You want to speak to the mic so that people, other people can hear you?
And yet, there's this education. I walked down the road with my dog, and people directly around the corner never heard of a gypsy moth. So, and is it their fault? No, it's just the way it is. The DNR is busy. They can't answer every call, every crying little thing. So this has got to be a team effort, and that's why I really wanted the TV cameras here, for the fact that we could maybe be an example of how a county and the people in the community can work together. And by the way, I just thank you for considering those residents too out there on all your decisions. That's really important, because that's why we're here.
That's right.
So, anyway, just please make sure we get this task force, it's got to be people that are willing to work, right? Because this is going to be work.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Speaking as a member of the public now, Nicole Messicar, 1401 Illinois Ave. I just wanted to offer some expertise perhaps for this task force going forward. There is a lot of resources, there are a lot of resources out there for education and outreach. Purdue has put together an actual curriculum for elementary students regarding this issue. And there's a lot of groups out there. I had mentioned after the council meeting to the folks that came to talk about it with the council that there is a Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area formed in our area. It's called a PLANT. The acronym is Porter-Laporte Advancing Natives Team. That's their acronym. They have a Facebook page. They're constantly trying to get folks to come out. I think this is a good opportunity for people to think more broadly. The gypsy moth is obviously a huge problem, but there's a lot of invasive species problem. And it seems to me that a lot of people don't think about it until they're directly impacted. So it's a good time for us to think, obviously, very specifically but broadly into the future as well. But I have some resources I could bring, and I'd love to, you know, help out with that. And I did talk to Jeremy Sabecki after the last council meeting, and he, you know, verbalized that the parks could also be a good resource for, you know, they have kiosks and that type of thing. So doing, you know, some education and outreach is something that I think there's, we're equipped to offer a lot of that in the county.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yep.
Good morning.
Thank you for addressing this gypsy moth.
Would you introduce yourself, Walter?
Walter Pearson, Junkheim Park, La Porte, Indiana. And if you know your geography of La Porte County, so we have the attorney Nelson, that's Schultz Road. And then now it's over here, Junkheim Park, if you don't know it, is the, next to the prison farm, very large subdivision, 250 units. And the infestation is getting serious. It's moved, just as Nelson said, you, Madam President, listened to his presentation on the council meeting, and it's moved from the caterpillar stage at my property right now, and my neighbor's property, which is one of his trees, is just about totally defoliated. But it's moving from, it moved from the caterpillar, and as of yesterday, they are now moving into the moss. And the presentation that was made at the council meeting from the expert in Washington, DC, what really got me was when he said, one caterpillar produces in that feces 1,000 eggs. One, 1,000. Oh, I'm looking at the numbers in my trees. And my biggest concern, it's very nasty, as our attorney can tell you, he's already seen it obviously, the feces is nasty, but the concern I have is, and I don't know what the answer is, and that has to do with health. Because I got little children, grandchildren come over to the house, and it gets on you. And there are little beads all over the place, because they're just falling out of the trees. This rain we just had last night, I've had to clean up this morning, and I'll be going back after I leave this meeting and clean some more. Appreciate you addressing this issue for us, and I'm making a point on the spread. You're taking Schultz Road, we got testimony from Schultz Road. I'm giving you testimony from Junkheim Park.
Thank you.
And I actually got the trees, and I'm willing, if anyone wants to address me on the issues, and I'm working with Diane Warrenke and Attorney Nelson on the subject. So again, thank you very much, and thank you for your service to our county, all of you. I watch you every week. This is the first time I was present.
We're glad you're here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public online or in the room that would like to You know, earlier in the meeting, someone quoted my Facebook pages, using your voice. This is an example of how you need to use your voice when there's a problem. If we don't know of the problem, we can't fix it, we can't work with you. And, you know, Mrs. Warrenke, you made a really good point about this being a partnership. For us to do it on our own, that won't work. For you to do it on your own, that won't work. So our goal today is to create a task force to address limiting, the damaging gypsy moth infestation. Mrs. Messicar made a really good point that we've got some county resources. So at this time, I would entertain a motion, and then I would like to include in the motion some suggested names. This came up in front of the county council, so I'm going to ask that Randy Novak, as the president of the council, and me as the president of the commission, serve as the chairs or, you know, organizers of the committee. But then we also put some county talent on there, like Nicole Messicar and Jeremy Sabecki. Amanda Launer, you raised some really good questions about health. Well, I think that's a really good point, and Amanda would be a good person or her designee. And then it sounds like we've got some real good expertise in Bill Nelson and Scott Keller in another neighborhood that is also on fail, that is experiencing the same thing. Mrs. Warrenke, I know you didn't really want to be on the committee, but I think you've developed, you have the passion and the local knowledge, and so maybe you and your husband, Kevin, could serve on the committee. And you can also help us make sure that other neighbors are understanding and we get the word out. You know, Facebook and social media is a great idea, but there's nothing that beats, you know, picking up the phone and calling people. And I don't know all the names of everybody else, but, you know, perhaps you can be kind of a conduit in the neighborhood to make sure that the word gets out, and we're doing this in a unified fashion. And then, you know, someone mentioned Brian from Tree Man. We've been talking to the DNR. So I think we have enough, you know, resources. We don't want it to be too big so that, you know, it doesn't, we don't get some action done. But perhaps, you know, with having a few county staff people to help push it forward on our end, Nicole and Jeremy, and specifically in Amanda or her designee, could work with the neighbors, and we can really get a plan of action. I had asked our attorney to call the DNR, there's an expert gypsy moth fellow over there. I can't recall his name at the moment. Chuck Newer?
Yes, it's Phil, excuse me, it's Phil Marshall. And so you may want to have perhaps a representative DNR. Then also, I might suggest too, one of the elected state representatives or state senators who represent that area, because you're going to need also, as we try to go after state funding.
Right.
If you could do that as well, it might be helpful.
So I know that Senator Pressle, or Representative Pressle has been asked about this issue, so I would suggest that we ask Jim if he would be interested in serving, and then he could help perhaps connect us statewide to different resources, or if we do have to make a funding request, you know, having that connection to state resources and DNR would be good. Ideas, Nicole?
Yeah, I would just suggest that you invite Michael Herman, who's the county soil conservationist, as he runs the Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area. So he brings a lot of expertise and access to funds and that type of thing.
Soil and Water, Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. So we'll have Michael Herman from Soil and Water, and I'm just making myself some notes. So if we could have a motion to the effect that the folks that I mentioned will be the hub of the group, and that doesn't exclude anyone, you can bring other people to the table, but just so that we have a kind of a tight group of doers. Yes?
I just wanted to bring up one more comment. Phil Marshall, the gentleman, this is where my education has come from.
Right.
This guy is like dead on, he's done this for over 20 years. He, I talked to him yesterday, he said not to reinvent the wheel with a lot of education. They have programs, they have everything, so like, not to, not that I don't want you guys, because they want people there.
So actually, Nicole was the educator, so she's our person. She's going to bring that to us.
So we could maybe train the trainer type thing, I think would be good. So I think having Phil there, because he's willing to come. He would have been here in July, but we got moved up to June, which I'm grateful. But anyway, just, I would ask that he be a consult on there, because for some of us with the DNR that came to our homes, we got information from, some didn't get calls. So I just want to make sure we got somebody who's a guru in there.
Yeah, Phil's our point person.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I'd make a motion that the commissioners, who are on record as a supportive of tackling this problem, and that Commissioner Mathias and also Randy Novak, president of the council, comprise this list and, as volunteers, organize a meeting and move forward as quick as we can.
Without objection, I'd like to make just a friendly amendment to that, to add on that we, since this is almost, most likely going to result in some spraying and things, that the, add a member... to add a member of the local beekeeping community to that, they've expressed interest in that in the past. I haven't spoken to him with about if he'd be amenable to, but Jeremy Smith has been actively involved in some of this stuff from last time with the equine spraying, so maybe a good idea to add his name on the list as well. And if it's amenable, then yes, I would second that.
That's a great idea.
Certainly.
So we'll add Jeremy from the beekeeping. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So we have created a task force loosely comprised of the people that we mentioned. There may be some additions that some of you may have recommendations. So Randy Novak and I will meet with Jeremy and Nicole and Amanda and try to get organized and get something out as quickly as possible. So, we've covered a lot of ground today. We've got claims, we've got, yeah, we've had travel, and now we're down to gypsy moths. Hopefully. All right, last but not least, we have review and advise on ordinance 95.6, and Joe, did you want to speak to that?
Sure. So it came to my attention earlier that this ordinance was still, I believe it's still on the books, I haven't found anywhere where it has been repealed. So of course, Indiana Code Title 35-47-11.1, and the following subsections of that actually basically totally negate and/or repeal what's listed here in this ordinance of 3547-11-2 that, or this ordinance 95.6 was based upon. So as it stands, this current ordinance is in direct contradiction to state law. I spent some additional time this morning going over this ordinance, and it's my opinion that we should just move to repeal it in its entirety. I didn't, there's nothing in here that I've seen that would affect anything that was occurring prior to when this was enacted in 1995. So things regarding courthouse or jail security, things like that, would not be affected at all, because nothing in here repealed what was already on the book. So this would just be, my motion would be to repeal county ordinance 95.6 here, and just simply get rid of it, that way to bring us into compliance with state law, and won't have any negative impacts on anything else that's going on in the county where these issues, you know, to maintain security in our courthouses and jail, for example.
So when we discuss this, you were going to ask for review and advise, you've changed that to repeal?
I have, yes, because this is very, looking at it again, I know initially there was some concerns, I spoke briefly with the county attorney about this yesterday, that this may impact some of the other operations, you know, for example, either jail or courthouse. But as going through this, there's nothing in here that repealed or replaced any of those things that allowed, because obviously we had courthouse security, we had jail security, and, you know, and those other areas where it would be prohibited. So, yeah, we had that prior to February 1995, obviously. So there's nothing in here that would affect any of that. So just repealing it in its entirety is gonna be the simplest, save the taxpayers money on it, and bring us into compliance with Indiana Code.
Okay, may I ask our attorney for his opinion?
Sure. I mean, Commissioner Haney and I spoke last night, and what I'd asked, because this was the first time it's brought to my attention, about eight o'clock last night, the particular statute, perhaps some direction with our office to work with Commissioner Haney on either a repealer or an ammendatory ordinance, because he's right, the statute as amended in 2022 does supersede some of the local regulation. But I want to be clear that we bring you a finished product of some kind, either a full repeal or an ammendatory ordinance of some kind, but I'm certainly willing to work with the commissioner on getting something that is consistent with current state law as amended.
I think that makes more sense, I haven't really had a chance to diagnose it, it's quite lengthy and involved, and I think we need to explore the legal ramifications of whatever we do. So I would, I'm not gonna second the motion, but I would.
Perhaps, I don't know if it's a friendly tabling at this point, so that we can get together and work on a product that's consistent with current state law, would that be?
Sure.
Fine. So we are going to table this until our attorney has a chance to review, and I know that we were having some conversations with attorneys for other municipalities and for state agencies and...
That's right. And I just got the revised statute last night about eight o'clock, so I need a little more time on it, but I'm willing to work on either a repealer or an ammendatory ordinance that brings us in compliance with current state law.
Second motion to table the item.
All right, and for the attorney and I to work together on bringing us into compliance, correct?
So we have a motion to table the ordinance, do I have a second?
The second motion.
Okay. You made the motion, though. Your motion is to table, you've changed it to table?
Yeah, I made a friendly amendment to table it, and then the attorney and I to work together to bring us into compliance.
We have a motion and a second to table, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Commons, Commissioner Haney.
Thank you, Madam President. Got a stack of papers here to make sure we're going through here so we're not overlapping. All right. It's been a really great past few weeks here since the last meeting. Just a couple of highlights, I was present for and attended the presentation, Lieutenant Governor Crouch came to visit our county tourism and convention bureau, and to continue to unveil and roll out the new In-Indiana campaign that they have to generate tourism in Indiana. It's nice to see and make sure that we get the information in front of our state representatives, you know, down south, that there is a lot to see and do in northern Indiana, and especially here in Laporta County. We have all types of events at our lakes, we have obviously the Indiana dunes, and then areas around the rest of our county. So it's really good to see they're taking a vested interest in promoting the entire state of Indiana, and to see that kind of, a new campaign to roll forward. You know, Michigan, of course, has had their Pure Michigan campaign, which has been insanely successful. It's also been insanely expensive for them to do, but getting out there and reaching this from the state level is really important, because it's using those state dollars down there as opposed to using some of our county funds here to promote Laporta County. So it's very interesting to see how that's gonna work out, and see that moving forward. Also attended a very good and informative meeting, the 39 North Conservancy District. There's obviously the concerns there with water and annexation and other issues up there. Still good to see moving forward, there are some good plans up there for that area. And again, you know, I want to reassure the residents and citizens up in that, not just in that district, but all throughout the county. You know, we have some very good dedicated volunteers that follow all the standards, both from the state as well as national NFPA regulations. And, you know, our residents are safe and they are properly protected by our volunteer departments. So I think it's very important to reassure those residents and let them know that they're not in danger, and that things are the same way they are throughout, not just the rest of the county, the rest of the state, and the rest of the nation. You know, as I've mentioned before, over 70% of the fire protection in the United States is provided by volunteer departments, and over 70% of the firefighters in the United States are volunteers. In addition to that, we had a very informative exit conference for the State Board of Accounts for our year ending 2019. There was another great South County Coalition meeting I attended as well, obviously. There's multiple festivities this past weekend, as we celebrated our nation's independence, the parades, both in Michigan City and Laporta, and the other events throughout smaller communities as well, fireworks this year. While it's a little sad we didn't have them at the fairgrounds, the city of Laporta put on a fantastic show on Independence Evening, so kudos to them for that. Also, something huge coming up this weekend, starting this Saturday, is gonna be the 176th Annual Laporta County Fair. And as I said, it opens a Saturday, it runs through July 16th. There's a number of concerts going on out there, while the July 12th one is sold out, there's still time to get some tickets for the 13th show. There's even gonna be a couple of free concerts on the 14th and 16th. Obviously, you'll have to get into the fair for that, but those two concerts, it looks like, are gonna be free there. Obviously, there's all the events that go on in Pioneer Land, the 4H, all their exhibits, animals. It's just, it's an amazing time to, I love summer in Laporta County. So one thing that I did want to touch on here before I wrapped up, there was a lot of good information that got out at the last council meeting. There was one issue that I clearly take exception to. Toward the end of the meeting, at council comments, Councilwoman Graham Rosa had commented, pointed out some inappropriate actions in an email that had went out from our county attorney. Councilman Cunningham then followed up and said, what she, referring to Councilwoman Graham Rosa, just said is clearly out of bounds, soliciting to get what he, referring to the county attorney, wanted. And he, Councilman Cunningham, concluded by saying, "I'm appalled." I would agree with Councilman Cunningham and Councilwoman Graham Rosa on that. Immediately following that, council president Randy Novak made some bizarre and curious comments. He said, quote, "The thing I find appalling is that Commissioner Mr. Haney sends this email to Nathan Patrick and tips him off about this," end quote. So I never preemptively sent any emails out to Nathan Patrick or to anyone else. I'm not exactly sure what he's referring about tipping him off to, but I will certainly say that the email that I did forward, I forwarded after the commission meeting on, it was June 17th, June 17, June 15th, a June 15th meeting, I forwarded at the request of Mr. Patrick, standing right there from my phone. And that was at his request for a public document. Am I supposed to deny a member of the public a public document? Am I supposed to make him jump through hoops and file an APRA request or an open door law request for a public document, make him jump through hoops for something that's clearly not privileged? Councilman Novak then goes on to say, "I find that appalling for the commissioner to take the effort to send the email out to the black community to tell them this is what they are doing," end quote. It's extremely disturbing to me. We've had, and I've talked about issues that we've had here on this board, about a lack of transparency, a lack of openness, and operating behind closed doors. It is extremely disturbing to see this mentality now jumping ship and moving over to the council side, and spreading like a parasite through our county. And the idea that, again, he used, Councilman Novak says, "I find it appalling," again, not what the county attorney sent out, but he finds it appalling that I would inform and give out information to the, his words, "black" community, and that's somehow wrong? Things are wrong here in Laporta County, I've talked about it for a long time. But this idea that, about the only time I can recall in my past 18 months, we've ever heard someone multiple gavel down in the county, has been an African American here speaking at this podium. The idea that apparently Randy Novak is taking issue with the fact that I would give out a document that's public records, perfectly fine to give out to anyone and anyone who would ask, and then take exception to me giving it to an African American, and then take exception to me giving it to the, quote, "black" community? That's offensive, that's appalling, it is disturbing, greatly disturbing to me. And the idea that he would try and then, he wrapped it up with saying, "But yet you don't support them." This notion that with two business days before, because this meeting that occurred was 6:00 PM in the evening, by the time we got to this on the agenda, it was well after closing time for the county buildings, with 48 hours' notice, we were shut down, all the county government, that somehow that there was some fact on my part that with, at that point, 48 hours' notice, we were trying to shut down the government, because I didn't make the motion to approve that holiday, when clearly, after Commissioner Mrazinski had ended his commentary after reading that resolution into the record that everybody's coming to work on Monday, to spin that around. I get Councilman Novak is, was upset with the commission about saying that the council had to approve, financially approve a day off. He sent an email out rebutting that, but that wasn't me, I didn't say that, that was in an email from Commissioner Mrazinski. For him to take out his ire on me and then just say, the inferences he makes about providing African Americans and members of the black community information that they're readily available to, and try and make them jump, try and make people jump through hoops to get something that was legitimately asked for and that I provided, it's highly offensive, it's not appropriate, and that sort of behavior should not be coming from anyone, let alone the president of Laporta County Council. So I would ask him to apologize. I've had numerous people come up to me and talk to me saying he needs to apologize to me, but specifically, I would ask him to apologize to Nathan Patrick, and to the, quote, "black" community that he references here, and so much as him basically saying that I should have denied them this information, it's just completely offensive to me. I'm gonna close with a quote, I don't know who said it off the top of my head, but it is, "Those who have the facts, pound the facts. Those who have the truth, pound the truth. Those who have the law, pound the law. And those who have neither, pound the table." Thank you.
Your turn.
Didn't know Randy Novak was here, or that this was a council meeting. I would suggest if you have issues with the council with Randy Novak, you bring it up at the council meeting, he's not part of this group here.
I would suggest Randy Novak come here and bring it up with me if he needs to, rather than spread lies and misinformation.
I don't think so. You're right, though, there's been a lot of issues in the last 18 months. So, anybody watches TV or has for some time, I'm sure you've all heard of Montell Williams. He's not only, he does a lot of things on TV, but he's a Marine, and he does a lot of things for American veterans. He has a program that he does every year where they help out a disabled veteran this year, just turned out that it was a disabled veteran who lives right here in Laporta County, Michael Stupar, who lives on Wasniak Road. It was kind of a big event, even WSJV-TV was there, covered it live. What they did was took Michael Stupar and his family out of their home, put them up in a hotel, and they completely redid his house. As a disabled veteran, there was a lot of things that were falling behind. So these people from Montell Williams called me back in the wintertime, said they had gotten my name as a possible for resource for a veteran's advocate, I don't know where they get that. But lady called me, she said some of the things that she needed help with. Okay, in order to do this project on the Stupars' house, they needed some permits, wasn't sure what to do, so I hooked her up with Mike Pollan. Mike Pollan walked her through the whole program to make sure that everything was good, had the inspectors out there regularly to check the whole program and the project, and make sure that it got done right and legal. They wanted to do some landscaping. All my long, long time friends, Julie Small at Small's Nursery, they donated all of the shrubbery and flowers and stuff and whatnot, but they didn't install them. That went to Don Nuland from the Nuland Brothers, who did all the landscaping around. They also wanted to build a deck on the Stupars' house. So I hooked her up with Nick Pollack from the Carpenters Union, they donated the lumber and built the deck, and it was really awesome. When they did the reveal, which means when they bring the Stupars back, they wanted to have a motorcycle escort. Hooked them up with my longtime friend Steve Headdog Moore with the Wall Gang, they had motorcycles, the limo motorcycles to bring them in, very awesome. They also wanted to have a color guard, so I hooked them up with Tom McGrath from the Junior ROTC, and those kids, they are so special. They wanted to have off-site parking, Jeremy Sabecki helped them out with that over at Creek Ridge, and then they brought the shuttle buses in, because there was lots of people there. And also, the Sheriff's Department helped with the road closing, so that they didn't have a lot of traffic trying to go through there when they're doing all this. All in all, the people from Montell Williams were a delight to deal with for all they did for the Stupars, and they just could not thank us enough for all the cooperation they had from all the good people in Laporta County that went out of their way to help with this project. And I got to tour the house as they were working on it, holy moly. They did a year's worth of remodeling in 12 days. And the group that did it was called Patrick's Military Makeover. These people, they are professional to the T, unbelievable. I told them we had a little mishap there, when somebody said they saw a sign on Wasniak Road, "Military Takeover." I said, "No, it's a makeover, calm down, it's not martial law." So just so happy and proud to be a part of that whole thing, and I got a lot of film on that, very moving. on that, very moving. Something else that I've been associated with for, I think since the inception, was the Problem Solving Court. We went to the graduation here on the 20th. Judge Friedman does an amazing job with that, amazing job to see these people who had turned their life completely around, they were in a dark place, and this is no easy job, this to go through this Problem Solving Court, if you screw up, you're out, this takes three years. These people are put to the test, and they answered, and they graduated, and they've got a whole new life ahead of them now. Met on site on I-94, 35, and 20 project, we're having an issue out there with wetlands, so we met with IDEM. I had Senator Bohacik and Representative Pressel, and Representative from Senator Todd Young's office, and tried to get this thing worked out. I think we've got a program now, we've got a plan on how to get this project going. It's going to be a huge game changer for La Porte County. Also, I can guarantee you that we are close to maybe sometime later this year announcing on a plan for the continuous problem with our drawbridge in Michigan City. Man, million and a half dollars a year of taxpayer money going in to keep this doggone bridge working, and we're exploring a whole lot of options, I can tell you that. Attorney Friedman and myself were in Michigan City to close on the property that we acquired for the Michigan City ambulance base, so that project is underway, it's going to be a good thing. Speaking of ambulance bases, I've been to regular trip out to Rolling Prairie to see our new ambulance base, I'm amazed, because you go by there one day and there's bulldozers, and you go by the next day and there's a building. And it's a dream that I've had, I've been working on for 15 years, to get this for my little town of Rolling Prairie. And also, we're getting, we met with INDOT and with the Highway Department, we're getting the signs installed where we're going to limit the, what they call jake brakes, the semi trucks. The other day, I was at Legacy Hills, and there was a guy that run his jake brakes from the top of the hill all the way past the golf course. Now, I'm not a truck driver, but I got to think that if you're doing the speed limit, you sure as heck don't be needing to run jake brakes from the top of the hill all the way down past the golf course, come on. So hopefully, when we get these signs installed, perhaps that will help with the problem there. And as we mentioned earlier, the county fair starts this Saturday, I've been asked, as usual, as a veteran's advocate, to be there at noon to raise the flag for the National Anthem, and we will commence with the 176th year of our little La Porte County Fair, the oldest in the state, of course. And as also mentioned, there's a lot of free entertainment out there. And I know you guys are all Jimmy Buffett fans, come on. We don't have Jimmy Buffett, but we have a Jimmy Buffett cover band, they're going to be there on Thursday, the 14th. They start at 7:30, so have a margarita and put on your Hawaiian shirts, I'm sure everybody's got them to wear to the council meeting and commissioner meeting, and come on out, but get there about 6 o'clock, because there's an awesome warm-up band, the band's been in business in La Porte County for 31 years, the world famous Rock Doctor Band is back. That's all I have, ma'am.
Hard to follow that up. I'm going to be brief, since we're well into the lunch hour. Great parades in Michigan City and La Porte, and so many volunteers that make those parades happen, so thank you to those, the two community mayors and all of the volunteers, Kiwanis, everyone for doing such a great job. The La Porte County website was redesigned, and we opened our redesigned website just as COVID was happening. We are doing an analysis of the website and figuring out ways to tweak it and upgrade it, but thus far, we've had 3 million visitors to our La Porte County website since March 2020. That is pretty amazing, which shows, goes to show that all of the work that we are doing to upgrade it and review it and make sure it's user-friendly, that there's a lot of things that our community members can do online without coming into an office, are really appreciated. La Porte County Works program, I usually do a presentation, we are taking a July break, we have had a personnel change, and so we'll be back at the beginning of August with another La Porte County Works profile on a regional or local business, and the jobs they may have available, and what they make in La Porte County, which has been so interesting. I was in the fair the other day, and I did a profile on Peepers, which is the eyeglass company, and two ladies stopped me, and they said, "Look, we've got Peepers on." So Peepers are progressive readers, and they're made in La Porte County, and they were happy to show them to me. Fair week, we've already mentioned, I don't know if everyone has seen the headline, but there were nine drowning victims pulled out of Lake Michigan over the weekend, that's a lot of drowning victims, and in addition, we've had some accidents or close accidents in the lakes in La Porte. I just want to remind parents and grandparents, if you have a pool, if you take your children to the beach, swimming is a survival skill. Lake Michigan and some of our own local inland lakes are dangerous bodies of water. I did serve as a lifeguard years ago, I've had the privilege of saving children from the water, it is a tough, tough situation. So a huge thank you to the water rescue team in Michigan City, Michigan City Fire Department, our La Porte County EMS, who goes to every site, Center Township Fire Department, which does a lot of water rescue along the lakes. And a reminder to people, those lakes are no joke, you need to really keep an eye on the children, and it's not only children, it seems like people that visit our community, they don't realize, you know, the lake looks, the lake is, Lake Michigan is very fickle in particular, it, you know, it looks really flat on the surface, but underneath, there's all kinds of things happening, so really staying close to the shoreline, if the red flag is up, do not go in the water, just a reminder about that. And, you know, someone earlier mentioned my bout with COVID, no joke, COVID is some serious stuff, and I encourage people to get vaccinated if they have not, but I want to really thank the community. I had so many people, I was down for the, like, six days, like, not out of my bed, but I really was touched by how many people reached out and sent notes and dropped things off, and it was just really very nice. So I wanted to just take a mention to thank everyone. Thank you for your patience today, we're glad that you're here, and thank you for all of you on Zoom, we now are standing adjourned.